Yeah. Okay, here we go. Yeah, it's 5:30. So we are gonna start our 5:30 meeting. Let's call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barron is not present today. Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas. He's off mic, but he's here today.
He's here.
Meeting compensation disclosure presented to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
And welcome to the students. I hope you heard just how little $790. And that's probably what? And I'm a student, gonna be a council member one day all for $790? So that's very true. Okay, so let's go ahead and do open session. Item number one.
The city council will issue a proclamation declaring National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation declaring National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month was founded in 1985 as a partnership between American Cancer Society and the Pharmaceutical Division of Imperial Chemical Industries and is observed the month of October as an annual international health campaign in increasing awareness of the disease and raise funds for research of the cause, preventing, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. And whereas men can also develop breast cancer, but the disease is much more common in women. And one in eight women have lifetime risk of developing invasive breast cancer, which is the second leading cause of cancer death in women. And whereas each year the United States, about 264,000 women get breast cancer and 42,000 die from the disease. And whereas although the exact cause of breast cancer is unknown, most experts agree that there are several factors that increase the risk, such as gender, age, genetics, family history, weight, race, and... Whereas nearly 80% of young women diagnosed with breast cancer find their breasts abnormally themselves. And whereas a variety of breast cancer awareness events around the world are organized through the October, including Relay for Life, walk runs, the wearing and displaying of pink ribbon. In most professional sports organizations where pink and off the field and the pledge of police departments participate in the Pink Patch Project. And whereas this is the ninth year, our Southgate Police Department is a member of the Pink Patch Project, a campaign designed to increase breast cancer awareness and throughout the month of October, Southgate Police Officers wear the pink badge and patch on their uniforms, showing commitment and support for this project. And whereas there are millions of breast cancer survivors in the United States and the report breast cancer survivorship has tripled over the past 60 years due to increased early detections and improved medical treatments. Now therefore be proclaimed on this 22nd day of October 2024 that Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the City of Southgate, on behalf of the city council, do here proclaim October 2024 a National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, encourage regular breast cancer detections practices and remind citizens to in support, celebrate breast cancer survivors. Furthermore, and I, the city of Southgate duly thank the members of the Southgate Police Department for their active representatives of the Pink Patch Project. Yes, and with this, and I know that, and I want to thank the Southgate Police Department for bringing this program to our community. The last past nine years, we have seen the job that you guys have done throughout, I mean, just throughout the entire community. It has been so much impacted in the positive way that everybody knows about the Pink Patch Project. And I know that this project was brought by our own Chief of Police Darren Arakawa. And you guys just took upon yourselves, you know, to be part of this and just helping those survivors, but also helping families, you know, that been going through this, been going through this disease that hopefully one day they can find a cure. But this time, I would love to present this proclamation to one of our survivors and a longtime resident of the city of Southgate. She doesn't live in Southgate anymore, but she has been the family of the city of Southgate as an employee, but most important as a community. But, and I just love dearly to Daddy Davinia Clayton. She is a survivor.
There you go. Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I feel very happy and privileged to be here today still with you all. It's overwhelming how many of our employees have had family members, moms, dads, cousins, aunts, you know, everyone that has gone through this. It's a long journey, but it's well worth it to be here. So I would love to accept this in memory or the people that have survived, the fighters and the taken. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Avalos.
Ms. Bonilla, I know you have been an employee of the city for a very long time and you retired. And it was during that retirement that unfortunately you went through your cancer. But I think we just need to be reminded, you know, that sometimes our bodies are telling us what's going on, but because we're so busy in the day to day, we sometimes don't pay attention. So I am happy to know that you're back, that you're healthy. But again, we have a lot of residents in Southgate who unfortunately go through different kinds of cancers, not just breast cancer. As a survivor of ovarian cancer, let me just tell you, we are blessed. Every single day we are here. And the fact that you came back and continue to contribute to this community is a testament to your strength and your resilience to fight such a disease. Thank you.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I just wanna, you know, emphasize how important it is, as Delia already knows, that early detection is so important, critical in our community, that people find out what the early signs are or all kinds, because there's all kinds of cancer. Younger, more younger people are getting it now, we're seeing it. And so please, you know, get to get the checkups and everything you need to do to get on top of it. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I have two of my aunts who passed away recently on cancer. And one of my best friends, a brother to me, Jorge Morales, former mayor, council member here in the city of Southgate. He just rang the bell, right, for part of the treatment, which means he passed that portion of it. Now he's gotta go through the chemotherapy sessions and very dangerous. It's, and it just pops up, you know? And again, early detection is key. But we just gotta bring that awareness in. And again, thank you to our Southgate PD for doing what you're doing all the time with this very important program. So again, thank you so much. Okay. Item number two.
The city council will issue a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day honoring those who have served our nation in the armed forces. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Rios.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to all of you that are here present today. It's good to have a lively group of folks here from the community. I get the honor to present this proclamation for Veterans Day that's approaching in November. My dad was a veteran, and I know we have veterans in the house, right? How many veterans? Please stand up, John. I know you're a veteran, John. Everybody, let's go veterans in the house. Any more? Honoring Veterans Day, November 11th, those who served our nation in the armed services. Whereas in 1918, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, an amnesty or temporary succession of hostilities was declared between the allied nations and Germany during World War I, then known as the Great War. And whereas Amnesty Day became a national holiday on November 11th, 1919, honoring our country's World War I veterans on the one-year anniversary of signing the amnesty which ended the war. And whereas domestic violence is not a private family dispute that affects only the people involved, it is a violent criminal act that affects all of us regardless of gender, race, income, or age in every community in this country. And whereas in 1954...
That's what, I'm sorry, somebody must have... All right, who's the culprit? Okay. We'll just get to the bottom. We'll get through it.
Yeah, to ensure proper and widespread observance of this anniversary, all veterans, all veterans, organizations, and citizens are encouraged to join in the common purpose to pay tribute to all American veterans living or dead by especially giving thanks to those living veterans who served this country honorably during war or peacetime. Now therefore be it proclaimed on the 22nd day of October 24th that I, Gil Hurtado, Mayor of the city of Southgate, do hereby declare November 11th as Veterans Day and call upon all to solemnly remember the sacrifices of those who fought violently on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. Let us return to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. Mayor Gil Hurtado.
Thank you for reading part of it. We'll get that fixed. But look, a couple of years ago, in 2015, I suffered a massive heart attack and I got through that. And my son asked me, he said, Dad, is there anything that you've done in life that you regret? And I said, no, absolutely not. I think that even those things that didn't come out too good, they're lessons, right? If you learn from them, then it's pretty good. And he said, so there's no regrets? I said, yeah, that's a different question. There are regrets, but those are the things that I didn't do. And one of the things that I wish I would have done is served in the military because I find that to be one of the most honorable things that any person can do, male or female, to put their life on the line, to allow the rest to have the freedoms that we share. So again, thank you, John Hamilton, and everybody that's out there that can hear this, the sacrifices that were made. So again, thank you on behalf of the residents of the city of Southgate. Thank you again. Okay, and we'll get that one, we'll get that fixed somehow before we present it. Okay. All right, item number three. Steve.
And just a reminder for all those out here that we will be celebrating Veterans Day on November 9th at 9:00 a.m. because we will be combining it with our Family Day in the Park, which will also celebrate veterans on that day. So we will be doing both together this year. So 9:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Fountain, and then at, I believe, 10:00 a.m. we will start the Family Day in the Park to also honor our veterans in the community.
Excellent. Okay, hope to see everybody there. Okay, item number three.
The city council will present certificates of appreciation to Southgate High School, Southeast High School, and Legacy High School students in recognition of their participation in the 2024 Student Government Day. Thank you, Mayor.
And it's usually typical that when you do the certificate, you have them handy. So who has them? Ah, our city clerk. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm gonna read the message and then I'll call the names individually after that. So certificate of appreciation presented by the Southgate City Council on behalf of the citizens of Southgate, too, and then I'll go through the names in recognition of your participation in Student Government Day 2024, signed by myself, Gil Hurtado. So let's go on up there. Okay, so as I call your name, come up, get your certificate, and then stay up here for the photos, okay? Giselle Bustos from Southgate High School. Destiny Lopez from Southeast High School. She had a very important role, by the way. She was the mayor, right? Kimberly Montes from Southeast High School. I was asking her, that's how you spell the name, because it's rather unique. Different, a little different. Wilson Paramo from Southgate High School. Zaira Ramirez from Southeast High School. If I mispronounce her name, don't tell anybody, okay? Emily Robles from Southeast High School. I think I know this one. Amanda Ruiz from Southgate High School. She plays for me at Southgate High Softball, so that's how I know her. Georgina Garcia from STEAM Legacy High School. Carly Hernandez from STEAM Legacy High School. Marisol Rodriguez from STEAM Legacy High School. Bobby Saucedo, STEAM Legacy High School. The whole school came, right? It seems like, okay. Andres Valdez from International Studies Learning Center, Legacy High School. And Josue Herrera from BAPA Legacy High School. Okay, while they make their way, let's go ahead to item number four, please.
The city council will consider receiving and filing the list of new and promoted full-time employees hired or promoted during September 2024.
John.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, it's with pleasure that we can introduce to you some of the city's newest employees and promoted employees. So first up is the city clerk's office, Tujadite.
Thank you, John. Council, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Vila Avilar Vasquez, a valued member of our team now. Vila has been with the city of Southgate since March 2024. She started as an hourly city hall receptionist, where she has consistently provided exceptional customer service to all who visit City Hall. In September 2024, she earned a competitive promotion to full-time clerk services assistant, reflecting her dedication and hard work. Vila holds a Bachelor of Science degree in business from the University of Phoenix. She began her career with LA County Health Services as an entry-level clerk and advanced to the position of supervisor of patient resources/services worker. Throughout her journey, Vila has focused on the administrative aspects of her roles, leading her to her current position now. Vila is a wonderful example of someone committed to personal and professional growth within our city. We are fortunate to have her on our team. She is a pleasure to work with and has made a positive impact since her arrival. Outside of work, Vila enjoys attending concerts and cherishes time spent with family, especially her son Michael and her grandson Mateo. I have found her to be incredibly helpful, charismatic, and always willing to go the extra mile to get the job done. Vila, thank you so much for choosing Southgate. We appreciate your hard work and we welcome you to our Southgate family. She is not here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Fabiola Salceda for promoting from our housing specialist to our senior housing specialist. This is actually a new position. She's been with the city almost two years, but she has over 20-plus years of experience in our in-housing authority. She helps train our junior staff, so we have a few hourlies who are new to the housing division, and she's helped train them. And she's also been a major contributor in raising the number of units, our Section 8 units, from 323 to over 372 units. So that's been a big accomplishment for us this past year, and she's been a huge contributor to that endeavor. So I'd like to introduce Fabiola Salceda. She's here tonight.
Okay, it's great. Yes, can you hear me? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and esteemed guests. I would like to take the opportunity to express my deepest gratitude to the city council for recognizing me with the promotion of senior housing specialist. Serving this exceptional city is and has been an incredible honor. When I began my journey here, I shared with the city council that I viewed this role as a stepping stone to a meaningful career growth. I joined this team with a genuine desire to contribute to this community, housing efforts, and to expand my own professional capabilities. Today, with this promotion, I am proud to say that I am one step closer to that vision. These past years have been filled with valuable lessons and opportunities. I am especially grateful to Meredith Alguira, Director of Community Development, and Carol Avril, Housing Manager, for their mentorship and unwavering support. They have continually encouraged me to develop new skills and explore new responsibilities, all of which have been instrumental in my growth. This promotion is not just a personal achievement, but a reflection of the supportive and empowering environment in this organization. I look forward to continuing to serve this community and work alongside with such a dedicated team to ensure that we provide meaningful housing solutions. Thank you for being part of an organization that fosters success and enables its employees to realize their potential. Together, I believe we can achieve even greater things in the future. Thank you.
John. Who's next, Public Works?
Yes, I'll go right in. Mayor and councilmembers, it's my pleasure to introduce Pablo Tovar. I'm wondering if he's here. No, he's not here tonight. So Pablo began employment with the city in September of 2024 as a water distribution operator. He will be assigned to crews with an important responsibility, that is to fix water leaks as they arise every once in a while, as well as perform numerous maintenance activities on the water system. He does come with experience to the city. He's worked for the city of Woodier, so we were happy to take him from there. He does hold a Water Distribution 2 certificate from the state of California, so he comes well qualified. If he was here, he'd probably say that one of his greatest accomplishments is being the father of two boys. He enjoys spending time outdoors with them, taking his son on bike rides, and supporting him under many soccer activities. Apparently, they're avid soccer players. So please help me welcome Mr. Pablo Tovar.
Good evening, members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. It's my pleasure to introduce Officer Eduardo Ariaga. Eduardo was hired as a police recruit on January 14th of this year. He graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy on September 19th, 2024, and was promoted to the position of police officer on September 23rd. Eduardo served in the U.S. Army and reached the rank of sergeant. Eduardo has previously worked as a detention officer in Seattle, Washington, and as an emergency medical technician for an ambulance company. Eduardo is a proud father, husband, and he enjoys surfing. Eduardo's looking forward to completing the field training program and would like to be a mentor to the youth in our community. I'd like to welcome Eduardo Ariaga.
Are you letting him say words out here? Come on, Captain, come on. See, when I coach the girls softball, I go like... See, when I coach the girls softball, I go like this. They know they gotta come up here, so.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this great community. I lived in Beauregardens most of my life, so I frequent here in Southgate. And it's really an honor to be serving the community. And hopefully, I could be a mentor to the youth and, you know, just bring the best that I could bring. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Okay, the next member of the department is Jonathan Duran. He was hired as a police recruit on March 3rd of this year and graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy on September 19th. He was promoted to the position of Police Officer on September 23rd. Jonathan grew up in the Whittier-La Habra area. He graduated from La Habra High School and is currently working towards his criminal justice degree at Cal State Fullerton. Part of his employment with the City of Southgate, Jonathan worked at Costco Wholesale as a department supervisor. He chose to work for the Southgate Police Department because of the family-oriented environment and efficience on community involvement. Since graduating from the police academy, Jonathan continues to stay physically active and attends jujitsu training. Jonathan, can you come up?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this great community. Thank you for all the mentors and officers that helped me throughout the process as well. I thank you and look forward to serving this good community that we gave them the opportunity. So thank you, guys.
Next officer is Officer Cody Henshaw. He was hired as a police recruit on March 3rd of this year and graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy on September 19th, 2024, and promoted to Police Officer on September 23rd. Cody's excited about being part of the Southgate Police Department as he continues the family tradition of serving the southeast area. In his spare time, Cody enjoys building engines and working on classic cars. An interesting fact about Cody is that he became a father while attending the police academy. I'd like to welcome Cody Henshaw.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to police this community. I've always wanted to, you know, be somewhere that was busy. And I know this city's pretty busy, so I'm excited to be here and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you, guys.
And last but not least, Adrian Manharez. Adrian began his journey with the Southgate Police Department as a police explorer in 2017, where he reached the rank of Sergeant. He was hired as an hourly Community Service Officer on March 13th of 2022 and was promoted to Police Recruit on March 3rd of 2024. Adrian graduated from the Orange County Sheriff's Academy on September 19th of this year and was promoted to Police Officer on September 23rd. Adrian was born in Torrance and raised in Linwood. He graduated from Downey High School and attended Cal State Long Beach for three years pursuing a bachelor's degree in psychology. Adrian enjoys working for the police department because of the department's family-friendly environment and is grateful for the opportunity to continue serving this community as a police officer. Ladies and gentlemen, Adrian Manharez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. I just want to say thank you to you all and thank you to the City of Southgate for the opportunity. And I honestly would not be here without the men and women of the Southgate Police Department, all their mentor and guidance. So I just want to say thank you to you and to them as well. Thank you.
Excellent. And to everybody, welcome and congratulations on the promotions as well. Okay. Yeah, let's bring them all up for a quick photo. Close session. Can you read them into the record, please?
Pursuant to government code section 54956.9C, one, potential case. Two, conference with Leo Council, real property negotiations. Pursuant to government code section 54956.8, property APN 6223-013-008. Property is 9923 San Luis Avenue, Southgate. City negotiator is Rob Houston, City Manager, negotiating with Zeigler's Hardware. Under negotiation, term of sale. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
One more.
One more. Number three, pursuant to government code section 54957.6. Agency representation is Rob Houston, City Manager. Employee organization is Southgate PMMA, Southgate MEA. Thank you, Mayor.
Any additional comments?
None.
Okay, let me open it up to the audience. Anybody wishing to address the council on these three items, please feel free to speak up. At three minutes, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mario Dominguez Jr., 10607 Samuel Gil Avenue. All right, so I'm not happy with the performance by our city attorney. So council meeting after council meeting, agenda after agenda, when it comes to the special city council meeting and the items pertaining to the office of the city attorney. The thing that I've noticed is when it comes to the item reports, is there anything that stands out that's a bit odd about the items pertaining to the city attorney that differ from the regular city council meeting? What do you see with the regular city council meeting? Pages and pages of information, pages and pages of data. With the city attorney, you get one sentence. On the October 8th city council meeting, I looked through that one, the last city council meeting. Again, you just get one sentence. You don't get a summary of what the case is about. You don't get a dollar amount of what the party is asking for in its lawsuit against the city. And I've asked the city attorney to make this information public when the mayor goes around asking the department heads for updates on what's going on in their department. And what does the city attorney consistently say meeting after meeting? "I have nothing to report." Oh, he has plenty to report. He should be reporting the payouts and settlements for these legal disputes that our city is paying. And he should be giving us also a summary to remind us of what the dispute is about, because I'm not going to be able to remember this information. So you need to, the council members need to instruct the city attorney that he needs to start kicking in and contributing to our proceedings by giving us the residents the information that we're requesting. Now, if you want to know what mediocrity looks like, you don't need to look any further than Raul Salinas, our city attorney. If you want to know what complacency looks like, again, you don't need to look any further than our city attorney, Raul Salinas. And when he says, because, you know, two council meetings ago, I submitted an email request asking the city attorney to disclose this information when the mayor goes around doing, asking for updates from the various department heads. And what was the city attorney's response? His was, "That isn't the custom here in Southgate." Well, who established the custom? Who's had the position for the past 20 years? Change the fucking custom. And yes, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Salinas for treating us, the residents, like trash and for refusing to provide us with the information that we're asking for. Yes, thank you so much, sir. You lame-ass fucks.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ramirez, and the MEA President. And I know we've been negotiating for the last couple of months. And the last time I was here, I kind of spoke more of the lack of what the city has been doing to collect funds in different areas where the, you know, with the city, with council, where you guys have been lacking to do what we believe your due diligence to provide for the city. But I think today, I'd like to speak from the heart and the heart of my membership, is I've been here for about almost 18 years. And this is the first year where I have felt not part of the family. I know you guys have attended our retirement parties at different events. You guys have always said that we're a family, we're a big family, right? Different things happen. We're a family. But this is the first year that I felt that I am a number, that I am a cost to the city, that I am a liability to the city, as well as some of my membership. Now, in the last 10 years, I've never considered a possibility of leaving the city until this year. This year, I found an opportunity. There's a position open that just does the painting for a school district that pays $1,200 more than what I make now. They get full coverage, they're in PERS, they're not asking for cost sharing, they're not asking for different areas. They're just, you have one job that was, that's what you do. But I love this city. I grew up in the city. My family lives in the city. I want to be dedicated to the city. And but it's getting harder and harder with different things that are coming up. And I hate to point at people or make or call people out, but Mr. Alreos, the last comments you've made at the last couple of council meetings have been, you've showed more compassion for non-employees than you have for your own employees. You've showed more compassion for a contractor that was leaving, even after the city attorney let you guys know that you cannot comment on anything that's not on the negotiations, that's not on, and just advised you guys of just be careful what you would say. Your first comments coming out of closed sessions was you showed more compassion for the SIACA memberships that were here than for your own employees. And I hope your comments aren't a reflection of your counterparts. Thank you.
That was perfectly said. Good afternoon, council members and Mayor of Southgate. My name is Joanna Monterosa. I'm the Vice President of the Southgate Professional Mid Management Association, with almost 21 years of service to the City of Southgate. As you know, we've been in negotiations with the city for several months now. We have been going back and forth with very little progress. We were present at the council meeting a few weeks ago to address those concerns. We know very well that what we are asking for is not unreasonable in comparison to how the city has negotiated with other bargaining units. I'm here today representing our members, asking that you look at those contracts closely. You will clearly see that what we're asking for is not more than what other bargaining units have received. It should be the city's priority to work around the clock to get this done. As employees, we deserve better than that. Your commitment to provide excellent service and support to the residents of Southgate could not be accomplished without us. Now, we respectfully ask that you look at our current situation and be the driving force behind the support that we now deserve. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Southgate City Council. Again, it's an honor and privilege to be before you tonight. I'm Charles Leon, Coordinator with SCU Local 721, our fantastic cities team. Tonight, we're before you again, asking for your support, asking for you to put yourself in the shoes of one of our incredible members, whether it be MEA or PMMA, who have done so much every single day for the City of Southgate. I've been at SCU 721 for quite some time. There's been a common thing that usually comes up from Southgate. A lot of times, we're looking at COLA numbers that are nowhere near what the workers actually deserve and are far lower than what the city is willing to offer. Right now, what we have before us is really a question on how does Southgate see its workers? Do you respect workers or do you not? Now, granted, there are multiple ways to show respect. But for us, with where we are right now with inflation, with all that the workers have done for this incredible city up until now, and they've done some great things. You can talk to this city manager, you can talk to prior city managers, you can talk to the city manager that was here for, I think, only a couple of years and walked away with lifetime medical. Whoever you talk to, the constant is the workers behind us. As the players change, the names change, mayors, HR directors, and city managers. The one constant is that when the sun shines tomorrow, shows up and rises tomorrow morning, workers are going to lace up their boots, folks are going to show up here to City Hall, the work of the city is going to get done for your residents and for their community. They are constant. It is unconscionable that the City of Southgate's obligation to CalPERS has actually decreased over time. And yet, this city is still asking our workers to contribute even more. Now, our workers in the past have been willing to work and continue to work with the City of Southgate. If there's going to be tough financial times, absolutely, our ears are open. But if there are times that are such where the city can give a little bit more, we're asking you to give. We're not here today to beg. We're not here today to say, "Oh, please." We're here to say tonight that enough is enough. We've treated you with respect all this time. Please treat our workers with respect. We're asking for your support for MEA, PMMA, and some of these things that are coming across the table, wanting workers to give even more, as if they haven't done enough. Talking about healthcare benefits, talking about CalPERS, talking about extra contributions. Listen, this may not be the most financially solvent city in the state of California, but you are not in a situation where you can't do more than what's being asked. Show that respect and practice what is preached about our workers, because Lord knows they're incredible and they are an asset to the city and they are a constant for the city and they care about this community. So please show that respect and care in return. And with that, thank you so much for your time.
Okay, excuse me, the yelling part, please. Thank you. Okay, any other speaker? Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion. Do we have any emails on?
No, no emails, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to retire into closed session.
Mayor, just really quick on item number two. I need to recuse myself because it's very close to where I live. So if you guys can take that first, and you can call me after.
Okay.
All right, here we go. Mr. City Attorney, can you report out, please?
Yes, thank you very much. City Council met in closed session as part of its special city council meeting. Item number one, conference with Leo counsel, anticipated litigation. That matter was not discussed in closed session and will be re-agendized at a future city council meeting. Item number two, conference with Leo counsel involving real property negotiations. This property is at 9923 San Luis Avenue. Councilmember Josh Brown was not a participant in any of the closed session meetings. He was excused this evening. And Vice Mayor Davila recused herself because she lives reasonably close to the property address. The matter was presented in closed session on a motion made by Mayor Thaddeus and seconded by Councilwoman Avalos, and on a vote of three to zero, the city council approved a tentative settlement in that matter. The amount of the settlement will be disclosed pursuant to the Brown Act. Councilmember Davila, who was not present, obviously did not participate in the vote, and Councilmember Barone was not present in the room. Item number three, conference with labor negotiator. The city council received a representation by its agency representatives, and a presentation was given, and upon completion of that presentation, guidance was given by the city council. There was no reportable action taken. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Thank you. Okay, let me open it up to the audience. Anybody wishing to address us on those items, please do so.
Okay, so just a couple more points to follow up on where I left off with the city attorney and my dissatisfaction with how he conducts himself at our proceedings. So two council meetings ago, as I stated previously, you know, I submitted a public comment email where I asked the city attorney to disclose the payouts and settlements for these lawsuits against the city. And, you know, when the mayor goes around asking department heads for updates for their departments and what's happening, this is when that information should be shared with the residents. And again, there's no summary. I mean, you look at item one, proof is right here. There's no indication as to what this legal matter is. And if you look at the October 8th council meeting for the special, for the special city council meeting, again, his items, just one line, one sentence is all you get. Now, I like Mr. Salinas. I think he's a good man. I like him as a guy. I like him as a person. And I'm sure when he's in there dealing with you guys on, you know, brokering deals and handling negotiations, I'm sure he's an all-star. Sure, he's great. But out here with us, the residents, he's dog shit, basura. I mean, this just shows you the lack of regard this man has for the residents, that, you know, he treats us like as if we're a bunch of ignorant Hispanic hillbillies. Well, this Hispanic hillbilly right here likes information. This Hispanic hillbilly right here likes details. This Hispanic hillbilly likes knowing shit. So I urge the council members, need to instruct the city attorney to start kicking in really and sharing with us the information that we want to know. And, hold on a second. What was the other point I wanted to hit on? Oh, yes, you guys seem to be cut from the same cloth. I mean, he's no different from you guys. I mean, you're so complacent with how things are done here, and this is what I mean by old modes of thinking, old modes of doing business here. You guys aren't willing to adapt, evolve, and grow in your positions. And, what was the other point? Oh, yes, when he made the announcement of, oh, well, because, you know, he responded to my email about the request of making announcements during the mayor making, going around asking for updates from the big department heads, when he made that announcement, well, isn't the custom here in Southgate? Well, again, who came up with the custom and who's had the position for the past 20 years? And as I'm watching this at home on my tablet, I thought to myself, that has got to be the most fucked up response I've ever heard at a Southgate city council meeting. So, yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Salinas, for treating us like trash and for your disregard for sharing information with us. And I just have one last thing I want to share. It's a gift for the city manager. If I could hand it off to Mr. Cervantes and he could pass it around to the folks and, you know, a little bit of show and tell. So, Mr. Cervantes, we could just hand this off to Mr. Costley. Yes, so, yeah, this is just for you, Mr. Houston. So you can enjoy this, and, you know, there's a lot of stress being the city manager, so, you know, a chance to mellow out and relax.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker. I think we get the point. All right. Okay, I'm gonna close the audience portion at this time. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, there's a lot of people in the city council chambers tonight that just may not, or may be wondering, why do we allow comments to be made that are critical of the city attorney, the city council, and we don't respond to those? It's because Mr. Dominguez has a First Amendment right, and the city council prides itself on allowing people to speak and to voice their own opinions, no matter how critical they are of any other person. We have a long tradition of doing that. We respect that regardless of whether we agree or disagree with their opinions, and that has been the rule here. We will always follow that. Other than that, I don't have any other comments, but I do think it's important for the public to know that we respect the right and the First Amendment for people to speak at the microphone and to voice their opinions regardless of how void they are of legal reasoning or factual basis. Thank you.
And my apologies to the families that are out there with their children. Unfortunately, even profanity is protected speech, and I wish we could ask people, well, we can ask people to hold back, but if they choose not to, that's their First Amendment right. So again, to the families and to the children that are out there, my apologies, but we have no choice on that.
Okay. Motion to adjourn second. No, there's no challenge. Okay, we're adjourned from that meeting. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, we have a meeting at 6:29, but there might be people here that are probably more for the other meeting. Can we flip-flop it, or is there a problem?
What I would do, Mr. Mayor, is I would open and continue that joint hearing until after the regular city council meeting.
Got it. Okay, fair enough. So if anybody is here for that meeting, the housing authority meeting, we'll try to continue that. Okay, let's open it up first.
Rock Hall.
Yes.
Mayor, Chairperson Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Chairperson Davila.
Present.
Council Authority Agency Member Avalos.
Present.
Mr. Barone is excused today. Council Authority Agency Member Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager, Director, Executive Director Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Authority Council Salinas.
Present.
So let me find out first if anybody was here in the audience for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can read the meeting compensation disclosure.
Okay.
Meeting compensation pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly, and the authority member is $75 per meeting regardless of the amount of meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, how much time do you need on this?
Meredith, do you have a time estimate?
Yes, we were going to be quick, hopefully less than 10 minutes, but, and we do have a representative.
All right, let's go ahead and go through that meeting.
Okay.
And we'll get, in eight minutes, we'll get it done. All right, here we go. You got a time limit. Here we go.
If I can read it to the.
Yes.
The cities of Southgate, city council, and the city of Southgate Housing Authority will consider A, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the County of Los Angeles Department of Children and Family Services to provide supportive services and case management services to participants in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Foster Youth to Independence Rental Assistance Voucher Programs retroactively effective August 1st, 2024. B, authorizing the City Attorney Authority Council to prepare, review the necessary documents, and C, authorizing the city manager, executive director, to execute the memorandum of understanding with the county of Los Angeles Department of Children and Family Services. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're bringing these.
We're bringing this program. This is a new program for the housing authority. It's for the foster youth to independence. This program is funded by the Housing and Urban Development Department and allows public housing agencies that partner, to partner with a public child welfare agency to request targeted housing choice vouchers to serve eligible youth with a history of child welfare involvement that are homeless or a risk of homelessness. So the youth will receive a rental assistance and supportive services that are provided for up to 36 months. So the Housing Authority of Southgate, in order to apply for these vouchers, needs to partner with the Los Angeles County Department of Children and Families. And also, we are going to partner with two other agencies that will also help us with the outreach for the units for the foster youth. We have the Safe Place for Youth and Hoviness that will be helping the Southgate Housing Authority identify and conduct outreach to attract local property owners to accept the foster youth to independence vouchers. So Mr. O'Connell is here to speak about, a little bit about the program.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Thank you for taking this item now. I'll be very quick. My name is Dexter O'Connell. I am the Director of Youth Policy and Advocacy at Safe Place for Youth, and we're in partnership with Hoviness, which is the youth coordinated entry lead agency for SPA 7. It's a genuine pleasure to be here and support this program. This program is for former foster youth, and the Department of Children and Family Services has an intake process that they've simplified, so that there's not really much additional burden on the housing authority, but Carol and her team are doing a fantastic job of getting prepared for this. And we will partner with Hoviness and other agencies to provide case management and housing navigation for these young people to make sure that they lease these vouchers up and have a successful outcome after the three to five years that they're allowed to participate in the program. We're very excited that you guys are participating. This brings you onto a short list of the other housing authorities, and you will be an example to other folks. I'm taking this to Norwalk and letting them know Southgate beat them to the punch. I'm taking it to Pico Rivera and letting them know Southgate beat them to the punch. So you guys are really going to be an example to the community, and we're really excited to be able to serve young people out here in Southgate with these vouchers. There are already foster youth in this area who qualify for this voucher, who have requested Department of Children and Family Services sign them up for it. They're interviewing them now, and we're really excited that you will be able to serve them. So thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Let me open it up to the audience. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address this item. Okay, I'm gonna close the portion of the audience. Any emails?
No emails, Mayor.
Okay, any questions? Any additional comments, Mr. City Manager or Meredith? None? Okay, yes. Ladies first.
Thank you so much for bringing this program into Southgate. When I read it, I was like jumping up. Former clinician worked with DCFS doing the bad assessments, and let me tell you, this is like a breath of fresh air into our community because I know a lot of our youth that are, you know, in foster homes, definitely once they leave, sometimes don't have a family to go to. So the fact that our city is one of the first, I can only say thank you, Housing Department or Community Development, for getting this done. I look forward to partnering up with you because I'm very much about supporting our youth, especially those that have been in the foster system of no blame on them, all the contrary. Unfortunately, sometimes those people that were put on this earth to take care of them, for whatever reason, you know, things happen, and it's no fault of their own. So it fills my heart to know that we're gonna be the first, and let's keep doing the great work that we're doing in Community Development. And Carol, thank you.
Right. I agree with Councilwoman Avalos. I think this is a great program for those, you know, for those foster kids that need that extra help. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, A, B, and C.
Second.
I just want to mention that, how many particip, how many vouchers are you gonna give out? How much money are we gonna get to the program? Do we know that yet or anything?
So Carol has generously agreed as part of DCFS's programming, they request that cities test it with five in the first year, and then if it works, you'll have the opportunity to expand. You can actually request as many as 50 per year. We're not seeking that from you guys. We know that that would be a significant proportion, but I think that our estimate of the total number of youth who could be served in Southgate every year would end up somewhere between 10 and 15, and so starting with five is a good place to start. We'll make sure the program works, and then we'll work together with you to potentially expand it if there's more demand. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. Over 30 years of my time here in Southgate has been dedicated to the youth programs, and in the program, there are some children that are going through foster care and very difficult for them, and seriously, this is a great opportunity for us to partner up. Thank you again. So we have a motion and a second.
Roll call. Council Authority Agency Member Avalos.
Yes.
Council Authority Agency Member Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Davila.
Yes.
Mayor, Chairperson Hurtado.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Carol.
Say hello to Norwalk. Okay, at this time, comments from the audience on non-adjourned items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a little request on that since this is a special meeting. We're not allowed to take non-agenda items up.
Oh, they listed that on here.
It is on the agenda. It should not have been.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you.
I'm just saying thank you to him. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion and a second. See, no objection. Okay, let's adjourn that meeting, and we're gonna go ahead, say when you're ready. Before you start that letter, make an announcement real quick.
Yes, very quick. I'm gonna make the announcement for the Spanish translation. Si hay personas que necesitan audífonos para la traducción en español, tenemos audífonos en la parte de atrás. Parece que ya tienen audífonos. They all have them? Okay. They all have them. Thank you.
Good. All right, so let me call this meeting to order. Who's done the invocation? Is that you against Steve? And the pledge of allegiance? It'll be John. How's that?
Please stand. Please stand and bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and all that you do provide for us, Lord. We ask for your wisdom and knowledge as we conduct this meeting here. We ask for your compassion upon all the residents of the city of Southgate, and we ask, Lord, especially that you look after our men in uniform, men and women in uniform, and take care of them each and every day in your holy and precious name. Amen.
And with the veterans, they coming up, I thought it would be appropriate for you to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
And Councilmember Brown is excused today. Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members is $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Okay, we have a public hearing. We have one item. Read it into the record, please. Item number one.
The city council will consider waiving the reading in full and introducing an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System implementing Section 20516, employees sharing additional costs to provide employee cost sharing of an additional 1% for the local miscellaneous members and the DMA for the total of 2%. An additional 1% for the classic local police officers and a PMA for a total of 2%. And for an additional 1% for new PeprA local police members in both POA and PMA. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. I will pass this on to our HR Director, Joan Hamilton.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, introduced tonight as the first reading of the ordinance authorizing an amendment to the California Public Employees Retirement System contract to implement a cost-sharing program between the city and the Division Managers Association, the Police Management Association, and the Police Officers Association. In this action, the amendment will provide employee cost sharing of an additional 1% for local miscellaneous members of the DMA, that is Division Managers Association, bringing them to a total of 2% for cost sharing, and additional 1% for classic police officers and PMA for a total of 2%, and for 1% for new PeprA local police officers in both POA and PMA. With this amendment, all DMA, PMA, POA members will be contributing 2% towards their cost sharing. Staff recommends the city council waive the reading in full and introduce this ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and the Board of Administration of CalPERS to implement these cost-sharing provisions.
Okay, any additional comments, Mr. City Manager?
I have none.
Okay, let me open it up to the audience. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, I'm gonna close the audience portion. Any emails?
No emails, Mayor.
Okay, let me bring it back to the council. Okay, move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
Mayor Hurtado.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we have a presentation. Item number two.
The city council will receive a presentation by Francisco Martinez, Government Affairs Representative at Southern California Edison.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Good to see you again. I'm here to do an update on the Siri Streetlight. The city has had some outages the last couple of months. Been working with our planning department, engineers, and city staff to troubleshoot, identify the problem, and come up with solutions. One of the problems is the RO transformer. It's a specialized transformer that requires to be replaced. The problem here is that the manufacturer from these transformers is no longer producing them, and we're getting to a point where they're not gonna be able to source them anymore, and that is what's causing these lengthy delays to the repairs. With that said, we need to come up with a process, we need to come up with a solution, a long-term solution to replace the system we're using right now in the city and how Edison provides the source to power them. That is something that, again, our engineers and planners are working with, city staff diligently for the last couple of months. With that, I understand there's some questions from the council that I could probably answer.
Yes, so let me open it up first to the audience, and then we'll bring them back. Anybody in the audience wishes to speak on this item, please step forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lilian Tovar, resident of the 9600 block of Anetta Avenue. I'm on the block with more, over two months without streetlights, and just wondering, I was just here to ask for an update because I think it's an excessive amount of time to be without streetlights. We have a huge crime rate in the daytime, let alone now, when as soon as I turn on to my street, it's like a dark tunnel. I was just wondering what the holdup is and what is the Plan B, a solution to get us a little something to get us through? I mean, daylight savings is coming up, it's only gonna get darker. My neighborhood has a lot of older women that live by themselves that come home to dark streets and their driveway and aren't feeling safe. I was just wondering, that was my, I was not aware you were here, which I'm glad you're here, I heard a lot, but, yeah, definitely a solution, a Plan B to get us some help soon because we're literally going on, we're over two months, we're probably going into three months. I have the note that you guys put on our, or somebody put on our doors. I called the city, the city told me to call Edison. Edison texts me, and she's, they tell me to call the city, so it's like, and I don't know where, who to talk to or where to get some answers.
Thank you for coming, by the way.
Thank you.
Perfect timing for you. Next speaker, please. ¿Necesita traducción?
Ah, sí, por favor.
Okay, so típicamente son tres minutos, pero vamos a dar seis porque va a traducir, pero como trabaja es que usted habla, hace una pausa, da tiempo que ella traduzca, y luego así. Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Pues buenas noches, mi nombre es Rosario López.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosario López.
Soy residente de la ciudad de aquí de Southgate.
I am resident of Southgate.
Y vivo por la calle Hildreth Avenue.
And I live on Hildreth Avenue.
Estoy aquí por la misma razón que la persona que acaba de pasar.
I am here for the same reason of the last speaker.
Sí, porque necesitamos mucho su ayuda.
We need all of your help.
Sí, ahorita como ella lo dijo, ya que está haciéndose más oscuro.
As she said, now that it's getting darker earlier.
Ajá. Se están presentando diferentes problemas, incluso de personas que han entrado a robar, incluso.
We've been having a lot of issues and problems with people that are robbing.
Hace menos de dos meses robaron mi casa.
Listen, two months ago, they robbed my house.
Hace tres días pasaron niños de high school.
Three days ago, high school students.
Y quebraron la ventana de mi vecina, llamaron.
Broke my neighbor's window.
Y pues sentimos inseguridad.
We don't feel safe.
So, pues por eso estoy aquí también yo para apoyar a las demás personas que estamos.
Which is why I'm here, also supporting my neighbors that are here for the same problems.
Gracias.
Sí, gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Lilian, soy residente de la calle Hildreth. Good evening, my name is Lilian, and I'm also resident of the area on Hildreth.
Yo creo que quiero hablar a las personas de la ciudad, y qué bueno de conocer al señor de la Edison.
I am here to comment to all of you, city staff, and to the representatives of Southern California Edison.
Porque quiero que me diga ahora aquí enfrente de todos ustedes, de quién es el problema.
I want him to tell us then, right here in front of all of you, who is then this problem, who does this problem belong to?
Si llamamos a la ciudad, dice que no es problema de la ciudad.
If we call the city, we're told that it's not a city problem?
Que llamemos a Edison.
That we should call Edison?
No, no es problema de ellos, hay que llamar a la ciudad.
And if we call Edison, then Edison tells us it's not their problem, we have to call the city?
Entonces, ¿en qué estamos? Que nos traen de allá para acá, y nadie se hace responsable.
So they're sending us back and forth, and no one's making themselves responsible.
Okay, ahora yo quiero saber, que me digan de quién es el que tiene el problema en sus manos, si es la ciudad o ese.
I need to know who is responsible then, who has the problem in their lap, and who's gonna fix it.
Ahora se van a explicar eso.
Y quiero que me digan que más o menos en cuánto tiempo lo van a solucionar.
Also give us an estimated date by when you're gonna be fixing this?
Ya, ya tenemos tres meses, más de tres meses de estar en lo oscuro.
We've been in the dark for almost three months.
Sí. Cuando vamos a caminar al parque, nosotros tenemos que llevar una lámpara en la mano y.
When we go for a walk by the park, we have to take our own lamps.
Y un palo en la otra mano.
One hand with a lamp, the other hand with a stick.
Y lo oscuro que está en la calle, y no creo que.
Because it's so dark out in the street?
Estamos pagando los taxes tan altos.
We pay our taxes, therefore we should get more things.
Y luego cuando necesitamos que se, que se solucione el problema, no hay nadie.
And when we need a solution to the problem, there's nobody to take care of it.
Okay, quiero que me digan de quién es el problema y cuándo lo van a solucionar.
I need you to tell me who has the problem, who's gonna fix it, and by when.
Okay, who's gonna answer?
Yeah, cuando terminen de hablar todos el público, cerramos el público y luego seguimos con las respuestas.
Okay, pues todo lo que quería decir.
Gracias, y gracias.
That's all I wanted to say.
Oh, yeah, my apologies. So I should let her translate what I said.
Well, now.
Okay, I'll just say it, that after we finish the public comment, close up public comment, and then we'll get to that issue. close up public comment, and then we'll get to that issue.
So my name is Eddie Rivas. I'm not directly affected, but I see that my fellow residents are. I live on Orange here. I've had issues with Edison that have not been resolved, but that's a different matter, so I'll talk about that later. But one of the things that I did want to say is, if there is a solution and there's a timetable for that solution that's months away, I was wondering if there's like an interim solution, or they can get lights through batteries or something like that during the interim, so they can feel a little safe? What was it?
Thank you. Okay, let me close the audience portion. Do we have any emails?
We have no emails, Mayor.
Okay, so we've been in contact off and on throughout the years, Francisco, so I appreciate you coming out here tonight.
Absolutely.
And these lights are 90 years old, and I totally get it. But I don't, what I don't understand is why Southern California Edison, knowing that these lights are that old, why it's taking so long for them to solve this issue? Because it's been going on and off for a long time. When I lived on Jackson, and it's pretty much coincidental that it's around this time when I lived on Jackson, that the lights had been off for about four months. And the reason I made such a big issue back then is for the reason why I just had to invite you to come here tonight. Children are going to be out there trick-or-treating very soon. And those streets that are dark are dangerous, and we need some solution to this. And again, I thank you for coming out here. I have heard the same complaint from people. We know that we can't fix them because they're not our lights, they're Southern California Edison. But when our residents call Southern California Edison, why are they tossing them back to us? So there's a couple of issues. Why are they tossing them back to us when everybody knows we don't have the answer to that?
Okay, first off, the streetlights are owned by the city. The Siri Streetlights are city-owned. And about six, seven years ago, Edison sent out a letter to all the cities that have the RO transformers in service, that the manufacturer was no longer going to make them. And that was ample notice to start making preparations to replace those systems. These are conversations had with prior city staff and prior elected officials. So it's not nothing new. This has been coming. Unfortunately, that moment is here now. The streetlights we're talking about needs an RO transformer. We have the last one identified, and are waiting for the delivery. With that being said, city staff is going to have to do some tweaks, some conversions to their streetlights, which I understand is going to take about a week or so to do, maybe less time depending on field conditions. Once it happens, we will calibrate the transformer, bring it out and replace it, and that's another week. Unfortunately, the fix will not be done by Halloween. For that, I apologize. The delay was not city staff, was not Edison, it's just a lack of inventory. And again, that inventory is depleted. The manufacturer is no longer going to make them or produce them. Once our semi-line is broken down, they're not going to replace that equipment to make these transformers. We have proposed a solution, going back to almost two years ago, to do a pilot project with the city. We proposed for Edison to buy out the problem circuit and convert it to an overhead system with no cost to the city. Edison would pay for the cost to replace that system. We offered that solution. The pilot project, it's still on the table, but even if we were to do that right now, it will take about four to five months to design and do the construction. What I propose, as we move along with this RO transformer that we're going to replace in the next couple of weeks, is also to present this pilot project to be in design at the same time. Because we know this RO transformer is going to fail again. It might not be in six months, it might be in a year, we don't know. But when that one fails, that system is going to be right back to where we are right now, without lights, without power.
So years ago, when that issue came up on Jackson, I reached out to then-Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. She's still Congresswoman, she doesn't represent our area. And she was able to find some funding that we were able to use to replace some of those older lights with LED lights. That funding is now difficult to find. We need to look at trying to figure out how to convert those other lights. This is way, way too much of a problem. Our residents should not be going through that. We need to address this and address it now. Also, there's a concern that our Southgate PD is not going out there, and I'm under the understanding that our Southgate PD actually increases patrols in those areas. Is that correct, Weathers?
That's correct, Mayor. We're usually notified by Public Works when there's outages regarding, you know, streetlights. And then we notify our watch commanders to have our patrol teams go out and extra patrol those areas. I've heard from the residents that there's, they feel like crimes increase in those areas, so I'll reinforce it on my end to let the watch commanders notify their teams so that they could continue to provide extra patrol in those areas.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt you, I apologize, I did receive, our city treasurer provided the following statements from concerned residents, if I can read those? For the record, Betty Sanchez, the Southgate Police Scanner, states that regarding the streetlights, can the city offer extra patrol to the areas affected? It's absolutely frightening to have, to park blocks away from home and have to walk in the dark. Susan Loera from Southgate News, she states regarding potholes. She has been calling regarding potholes but is still unresolved. The potholes are on San Luis Avenue between Michigan and Tenaya. Thank you, I appreciate you. Marcy Villa Señor, Savala from Southgate News, she states regarding the streetlights, the corner of Michigan and Dorothy Avenue, the last two streetlights are out. Wendy Rivera from Southgate News, she states regarding solar streetlights. Will they be doing this on all streets that don't have lights? Anetta doesn't have any either. Paul Garcia from Southgate News, he states regarding the lights, the corner of Anetta and Missouri lights are out, neighbors walking their dogs with flashlights. Viralise Martinez from Southgate News, she states regarding the signal lights. Can we do something about the signal light on Firestone Elizabeth Avenue? It either never turns green or in the last three seconds, this only occurs when it's not school time. She has called dozens of times on that. Claudia Diaz from Southgate News, she states regarding streetlights on Duncan Way, there are at least five lamps out, only between Atlantic and Salt Lake. Liantovar, Southgate Police Scanner, she states regarding the streetlights. She also lives on Anetta Avenue, has been dealing with no streetlight issues. She states that she has been calling the city and Southern California Edison. Union Patino Oscar Santos, Southgate Police Scanner, she states regarding the streetlights. She lives on Hildreth and they have the same problem. She calls once a week to Edison and the city, and like Claudia stated, they throw the ball around to each other. Ivan Barrera via Facebook Messenger, he stated regarding the streetlights. He lives on Iowa Avenue. The streetlights are always going out and would like the city to install solar LED lights in their neighborhood. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Francisco, Mr. Martinez for coming. Appreciate that. I know a couple of years ago, around this time, we had issues at San Gabe with some of the other streets, I remember. And what we did was to, because it sounds like the fix is here, I mean, it seems like you're offering a fix, but it's going to take some time. Didn't we used to have Arturo, those temporary lights that we put in some of the streets where it was some concerns with safety and so forth? Didn't we use that? And if it's been two or three months, why haven't we done that? Because we've had shutouts, and we resorted to that, right?
Yes, I was ready to provide an overview. When you're ready, I can answer that question that we do have a policy that allows us, and some of the budgets that the council has programmed to roll out light towers. Those are rentals, those are very expensive for issues like this that last months, and so we're contemplating alternatives. Can, should I present that now, City Manager? Or should I wait for all of the input? Yeah, so let me kind of just start by providing a very brief overview for understanding. So the city has a streetlight system that has, you put those in two buckets. One is the LED streetlight system, and the other is incandescent lighting or Siri Circuit Streetlight System that is powered with these transformers. The transformers are like the battery, if you will, of the streetlight system. So Circuit 34 impacting Hildreth in that immediate area, it's basically without a battery. So when residents call the city for support, there's not much more we can do to fix that problem, and we're looking and working with Southern California Edison to fix that particular program, problem, which Francisco expressed the challenges with that, which we understand. The City Manager, myself, and the Field Operations Division have been coming up with, we've been brainstorming and looking at what can the city do with our challenge? Our bigger challenge is a $30 million price tag, right, to address all of the areas. But the challenge is, it's not just the streetlights, it's the streetlights and the conduit. So can we come up with $30 million? We came up with this, we developed a study. The study had six options, and they're all well beyond what we have funding to address. So in our, the, we came up with what we consider a very feasible solution, which we're going to implement as a pilot project. I'm not sure if we're going to be the first city out to shoot, but we think it's very safe and reliable to proceed in this direction. Under a hybrid solution, this particular circuit is going to be the one that we're going to convert to a combination of solar lighting and Southern California Edison-powered lighting. Solar lights are going to be installed at every other light pole. So when we complete this, which our schedule is possibly within the next two weeks, that entire area would be lit, except that for every other light pole. Every other light pole, on the other hand, would be off as well. We would have LED lighting, so we would have some level of lighting with what the city is capable of doing. Meanwhile, Southern California Edison gets their hands on this transformer and places it. When that transformer is installed, when that, we're going to leave the solar lights in place as well as the old incandescent lights, and in essence, we're going to have two streetlight systems serving the same area, every other light being solar and every other light being Southern California Edison. The Edison-powered, the benefit of that is this issue sort of doesn't recur. If the transformer goes away and fails again, as Francisco has mentioned, the solar lights will still be on. If solar lights fail, the Southern California Edison lights will still be on. So we, it's a pilot project, I do want to stress that. We're not going to roll that out to every streetlight circuit in the city that has the same issue because we're piloting it, and we don't want to go down a road that might have issues. So if the public wants to know what the city is doing about this issue, it's a number of things. One is we're proceeding with the hybrid streetlight system. Two is we're actively looking for grant funding, which is very incredible, very difficult to obtain. We've done, have done some studies, and unfortunately, we don't have any other reasonable solutions aside from the city manager's mind and staff's collaborative solution of a hybrid streetlight system, so that's where we're at. So for the public, if they call us about this very specific issue, we, the city cannot repair that transformer. If they call Southern California Edison, we have an issue with the streetlight system because of its age, that uses a power a transformer that is no longer in reproduction. So it's a challenge. So with that said, we have a solution, if the City Manager would like to add.
Thanks, Art, and appreciate the difficulty, and it's been explained. It still can be hard to get our head around, but we realize, as was mentioned, we got a problem on Hildreth, we have a problem elsewhere, and there'll be future problems as the old infrastructure keeps decaying. We'd like to try this pilot project. There'll be a cost involved with purchasing the solar heads that go on the poles. We keep the poles, put on the solar lights. One could say, why not convert everything to solar? We've done outreach to other cities. There's still new technology. There's some questions about its feasibility, both how long can a charge last? How big's the battery? And maybe the first several years, maybe it lasts enough to stay light all night before it wears out. Maybe that starts deteriorating, we don't know that. Also, in the summer, nights are shorter, so maybe it charges, it lasts for 10 hours. That lasts all night, but that 10 hours, when you get into the winter, goes out at 3:00 AM. So it could be dark, and then you might have gray days, rainy days, not as much charge. You could have big street trees shading the charge. We want to test it before we go, and other cities have tried it in parking lots. They haven't started to a high degree putting in streetlights. Streetlight folks, or the makers, say it works. We'd like to hedge our bets, have both solutions, get something in the next couple of weeks into the neighborhoods, and see if we have a plan that we could roll out further.
Any comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Francisco, thank you so much for coming in and providing that explanation to our residents. Because if there's one thing I don't appreciate is when you call and you get bounced around. That's where our frustration comes from, and I do hear the residents. And thank you so much for coming out and expressing your thoughts. My question to you is, how many more of these ROs do we have still in existence in the city? Because this is an issue that's coming to us today. I can only imagine how many more we still have out there that we are going to need to address. Again, if you can enlighten us as to how many we have currently in the city, and obviously if the manufacturer's no longer producing them. I mean, I know we're going to have a pilot program. My concern is, what if they all go out at the same time?
Okay, so, thank you, I appreciate that. I do not know how many streetlights the city has, and I don't know how many ROs are in service because that's a city asset. I can tell you that Edison has 476 streetlights that Edison owns, of which are all under the high-pressure sodium system right now. If we convert them and city staff gives us the approval, we'll convert them to LEDs. As soon as you convert them to LEDs, the city will save $38,000 annually for the first 20 years. After 20 years, you'll save $48,000 annually for the life of those streetlights. That's on the Edison-owned asset. So once you tell me yes, convert them, we'll do that, and that's a savings to the city right off the back.
So if I can address the question, the city's streetlight system, about 45% of it has been converted to LED, so the other 55% is still on these old circuits with these old transformers. While I don't know the number of transformers, about possibly over 2,000 streetlights are on these older RO transformers. We're working with Southern California Edison at various levels. We're also looking at things like splitting the circuits, where you cut them in half, and they potentially use, they use transformers potentially that are smaller in size and might be more available, though they're no longer being manufactured either. But we're looking at as many solutions as possible to address. So the chances of all of them going out at the same time is highly not likely, but if they did, the city would be ready to move forward with some temporary solutions, likely solar on a temporary basis. Meanwhile, we find other solutions. But as City Manager explained, that doesn't come without potential challenges. So yeah, we're going to need some patience.
Thank you.
Did you have another question, Maria?
Francisco, you mentioned a fix that you asked, so is that the fix we're talking about? Or what is the fix? Because I think, and you said that it doesn't cost the city, and you offered it a couple of years ago, so what is that fix?
So the fix is where the city would sell that problem circuit to Edison. The city would turn over that to the Edison. We would design a system, a streetlight system. We would cut the existing poles, abandon the infrastructure in place, put in a new pole, put in a wire, a conductor to the new streetlights, and Edison would run and operate that system. That is no cost to the city. The only cost to the city is the electricity that you use to power those streetlights. It will be on the LEDs, it will be less than the current high-pressure sodium system. That system would be a pilot project for you, the city, the constituents, to see if they like that system, if they're happy with the output of the electric. they like that system, if they're happy with the output of the electricity and the cost savings.
Is that a notch we're looking at?
Yes, but it's a very it's a much more complex discussion and decision making process in that we would be selling our assets to Southern California Edison. In that case, one circuit for a dollar in exchange for them installing their systems. So you're, you know, selling something for a dollar. Now you lose control of the streetlight system. Do we want to turn over a part of the streetlight system to Southern California Edison for the reasons he stated? Or do we want to figure out if we can continue to look for solutions? So I think it requires a lot of discussion before we can make those decisions. But we have started discussions with Southern California Edison and we're currently vetting that he is right, that times passed when Mr. Chris Jeffers was here. They did put that solution forward and at that time we opted out. But with Rob Houston here, we're looking at that potential solution again.
Councilmember Reels, with that said, this pilot project would just be a demonstration if everybody agreed it was a good solution to the problem. Southern California Edison would proceed with the city's agreement if you were to agree to it and convert additional city owned streetlights to this new system at no cost to the city again. And this proposal is also on the table or city management to review.
I have a quick question, just on that design. I heard the overhead wiring, is it not underground with conduit, it's just overhead?
That is correct. So right now, your system are standing poles, all the wires are underground, so you don't see any wires. The system we're proposing would be wood poles with a wire connecting them overhead. And that reason is the cost is a lot less than to do civil work, cut into the sidewalks and the streets.
So in a neighborhood, instead of the poles that we're used to, you know, nice aesthetics in some of those poles, those would be chopped, a wooden pole would be put up, a light screwed onto the wooden pole and then wires dangling between poles?
That is correct. It's an overhead system.
I think that that is, I mean, going backwards, if you ask me, just, you know, my unvarnished opinion. We want to move the city forward with the aesthetics as well, you know, cutting down the curtain poles to put up, you know, something that looks like a concentration camp. I would be opposed to that. Thank you.
I would probably have to concur. Honestly, I mean, our city, I would not subscribe to that. Because it would definitely, you know, deter. First of all, we already have some in some neighborhoods that issue. And our trees are not being trimmed on a regular basis. So my concern to that would be in case of an earthquake, we know the big one's coming and these cables are on the floor. For me, it's more of a safety issue that if we can keep what we have and run it underground, I think that would be the preferred avenue. I do understand that if you do any new construction in the city, everything has to go underground. Why would we make the exception on this one? So let's look at all of the options, Arturo. I think it's imperative that we look at everything, weigh the pros, the cons, before we jump into any decision making. But I do appreciate the offer, Francisco. And again, we're looking at different solutions that are going to fit our community's needs.
Understood.
Thank you.
And I want to agree with the councilwoman and our treasurer. You know, we see other cities that it's part of Edison and all their wires are underground. Why is it always the the southeast cities that get hit with those ugly wires on the side? Why can't we all go underground? And that's something that Edison needs to start thinking of, you know, seeing us equal, which they they don't have. I mean, they don't see us that way.
Yes, Councilmember, I understand. The cities that have underground some of the distribution lines, some in the South Bay, some of those cities passed ordinances where the property owners were assessed a tax into their property taxes and they paid for those wires to be underground. That is one way to do it. At the other way, I just don't see how they were underground everything.
But isn't there a state law now, I mean, that I can think back, I mean, that it was it was a state law that all wiring would have to go underground?
For new development, new communities?
It doesn't matter. I mean, we're cities and we still have wires overhead. Why can't we just do them underground?
That would be an astronomical cost and the rates would rise significantly for every customer to do that.
Well, you guys see opportunities. I mean, there's always funding out there that you guys find. Why can't we find those grants out there and get those underwires?
That's not really going to be the case, councilmember, to underground every wire in every city across the entire service territory. Every bill would be about in the thousands of dollars to do that for everyone.
I'm only thinking about Southgate. This is the only city that I represent.
Understood.
When I had Mike Flad here years ago, we were having streetlight issues. And I remember that he went and spoke about how he's been in multiple cities, much more affluent than Southgate. And he raised that very point. Why is it that this is happening in Southgate and not in more affluent communities? I guess, you know, there's a point where we get fed up. We live here too and on the blocks that we're on, we're affected as well. All of us are. But it isn't because we are impacted as individuals, our community is impacted. These people deserve better. Look, my wife is from Tijuana and she tells me they don't have power outages like this in Tijuana. That is insane to think that it's okay here in Southgate. And I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. I think there's an opportunity to seriously address this issue, not on a temporary basis, but a permanent basis. And what I'm hearing tonight is just not making any of us happier or the people in the community. And again, Francisco, I'm not blaming you. I know you're you're here and you we invited you and I don't know that it's coming out as unfriendly to you. That's not the intent. But we have to express our frustration because it's enough is enough. Again, we're talking about Hildreth, but we could be talking about other streets. Fifty-five percent of our lights are still those ninety year old lights. And before we changed that other forty-five percent, it was happening there. Those forty-five percent were changed because they were the worst. But now there's others that are starting to be impacted. And now that they don't make those parts anymore, temporary is not going to be good enough. So Mr. City Manager, I, you know, I what I heard tonight was very disheartening and we need to come up with a better solution. But in the meantime, we got to get some lighting out there, Arturo, for those residents that are struggling. And Captain, we need to do something to have additional patrols out there. Our community needs to not just feel safe, but be safe.
Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Francisco, can you tell me, how many towers do we have in Southgate that are owned by Edison?
How many poles?
Towers, those huge towers that we have around our city, up and down.
The transition towers?
Yes.
I can get it count for you. Oh, send it back to you.
Yeah. And if you look at the numbers around those towers, cancer cases, they're very high. So please take it back to Edison and let them know. They need to start taking care of the city that is housing all of those towers that are providing a lot of the affluent communities with light. Because I I think our residents deserve better. Our community deserves better.
You know, and
Thank you.
Being that, you know, we're by the seven ten freeway, this has nothing to do with you, but when you think of the I-710 and the amount of traffic that's coming into the I-710 and then trickling onto our streets because of the importing that takes place at both the Port of L.A. and the Port of Long Beach, over forty percent of our countries' importing takes place at those two ports and it benefits the country, but it impacts low income communities like Southgate. And so when we sit up here and we are at the mercy of other agencies, you know, we have issues with Union Pacific Railroad. We can't go there to clean up all this discarded furniture and all this trash and because it's not our property. But Union Pacific Railroad doesn't have to deal with that because they don't, you know, they don't let us go in and clean it and then they don't clean it. I mean, I can go on and on to all these, you know, Southern California Edison, Union Pacific Railroad. They benefit from the things that impact our low income communities and I just think it's enough is enough. Mr. Reels.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Francisco, you know, our city's a hundred years old and its neighboring cities are also probably in a similar situation. I would imagine that you've experienced the same kind of problem with some neighboring city, maybe the city of Los Angeles has been around long too. Are you are you experiencing these kind of issues with transformers going on in other places around and and how are you, you know, how are you dealing with that? I mean, is this is this are you offering any other kinds of solutions? And I'm hoping that Edison would work with us to find some remedies here that we can, you know?
Yeah, I cover twelve cities and this is only a city we're having problems with the streetlights, with these ROs transformer system.
So this is.
All the other cities are Edison owned streetlights and we don't have these problems. They've been converted to the option E's LEDs.
With the big wooden pole?
I
The ugly pole?
Their overhead systems, yes.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Continue working with city staff.
Mr. City Manager, anything else? Yes.
Can we have the names of those cities?
I'll get back to you. I don't have them off the top of my head.
Thank you.
I think it's a good discussion. Appreciate Francisco coming into a complex world. And I think I would maybe say we are working hard to brainstorm ideas on how to get to a better place. We may be bringing in an extra consultant to look at, you know, different funding sources to solve this on a broader scale. But in the short term, this solar concept hybrid, we want to get a solution to our current problem neighborhood within the next several weeks. And I'd say my final comment would be, if this is easy, it would have been finished already. So we are, there's been a lot of years of this and I'm hopeful in the next few months we could have some vision of how to get a longer term fix. But let's work together and get it done.
And Francisco, again, thank you for making yourself available when we have those temporary outages that go off for at least for a few hours. When I've reached out to you, you've always been right away to answer the phone and and give us at least an update on that. And so again, I I know what came out, maybe myself came out rather aggressive, but it's not you. It's Southern California Edison. You just happen to be the face there, that's all. But I do appreciate you being open and available every time I've reached out to you.
Absolutely, it's a partnership. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention OC Harold from City Staff and Francisco Robles and all the other men and women out there that are out there working on this. I was on a call recently with our engineers and planners and to see how OC and Francisco can number crunch and do data on these circuits is incredible. And the city should know this, constituents should know this too, you have a good city staff working on this.
Thank you, Francisco.
Thank you.
And that's okay with you, this is something with them. So to respond to our community who's out here, who wants to know what we're going to do, at least temporarily, what are we going to do to make sure that those lights, those at least we have some lighting out there at some point?
Art, what's your timeframe for this?
Yeah, so the timeframe is we've just opened a purchase order to order the lights just today, I approved that. We're anticipating that within three days, those lights could arrive. It would take us another three to five days to install them. I know that that is we're completely depending on the manufacturer to deliver those lights. So we hope to have them up and running within a couple of weeks with that caveat. And what I'm referring to here is this circuit that is impacting Hildreth and some of the surrounding streets. So you will see something out there soon and those solar lights will be LED.
Okay. And temporarily, we're going to have additional patrols out there, Captain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll provide extra patrol in those areas where the streetlights are out and be visible.
All right. Okay. At this time, I'm going to entertain comments from the audience on non-identified items. So if anybody wants to speak, please come to the mic.
My name's Jennifer Daly. I'm a Los Angeles resident speaking against the truck yards operating illegally at eighty-four forty Alameda and forty-five fifty-two Ardene Street and harming the residents of Southgate. I spoke here at the meeting two weeks ago and have returned because the council has claimed to be unaware of this problem, when it has been made clear to you for years, actually. The truck yards haven't had a legal permit to operate since July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. At the last council meeting, I addressed four illegal truck yards and all I received from the council was a remark about eighty-four forty Alameda getting a visit from code enforcement. This response is unacceptable. Again, the four illegal truck yards operating without a permit are located at eighty-four forty Alameda, forty-five fifty-two Ardene Street, fifty-two eleven Southern Avenue and fifty-seven sixty-seven Imperial Highway. I understand that fifty-two eleven Southern has been shut down. What is the status of forty-five fifty-two Ardene Street, eighty-four forty Alameda Street and fifty-seven sixty-seven Imperial Highway? Since December twenty twenty-three, residents have been reaching out to the council about the problem of illegal truck yards destroying their communities. They've sent emails, letters, spoken with council members on the phone and met with them in person. I have records and a paper trail of all of these exchanges and the council is telling me none of this is on record and that you will now look into this matter? You have been saying you will look into this matter since December twenty twenty-three. On January eighth, twenty twenty-four, one council person stated that this case was presented to the planning commission last year and the planning commission upheld the staff's decision not to renew the temporary use permit issued for truck storage use. This means there is still no TUP. The council person goes on to say, the operator filed an appeal against the planning commission's decision to uphold the staff's decision and our attorney is currently reviewing supporting evidence on the appeal. We have not decided if we will accept and present the appeal. If our staff chooses to take the appeal to the planning commission, we will send out a public notice to all interested parties, including the petitioners on your list. Again, this was December of last year. So clearly, the council has known about this problem and there is no temporary use permit in place. That promise was made back in January. So did the council staff take the appeal to the planning commission? Did you send out a public notice to all interested parties, including the petitioners, as you stated? Why are we back to square one where the council is acting as though there is no knowledge of this problem? What backroom deals are being made to keep eighty-four forty Alameda and forty-five fifty-two Ardene running illegally? It is completely unfair to gaslight your constituents claiming to have no idea about this problem when you've known about it for years. The question is, are the truck yards legally permitted? And if not, what is your course of action to shut them down? The council's refusal to be transparent and enforce the law and protect Southgate's residents is forcing us to partner with other community organizations and bring our valid concerns to the press. We hope you will do the right thing and take your residents' concerns seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, so I have four questions for the city attorney. So the first one I'd like to know is, does the city manager have the authority and right to instruct residents to a certain to remove profanity in language, you know, type of language that they use in their emails? Does the city manager have the right and authority to restrict residents from certain language and words, cuss words, profanity? That's question number one. Question number two, does the city manager have the right and authority to block and ban residents from submitting emails to the staff that works inside Southgate City Hall? Because the city manager is telling me that my emails have gotten so outrageous, so out of hand, they have no choice but to ban and block and blacklist my emails from getting to Mr. Costley or Ms. Alguida and the folks that work inside here. So I'd like some clarity on that. The third question I have is, the city's YouTube and The third question I have is, uh, the city's YouTube and Facebook account, does the city manager have the authority and the right to restrict residents from posting comments on the city's Facebook page and YouTube account? Now, last year, under Chris Jeffers, we were able to do so. But now that we have this fascist asshole of a city manager, no, can't, can't do it this year. And I don't even know if Lizette Ruiz or Andrea Polino are allowed to permit, you know, to post comments. I can't read anybody's comments. I can't, I have no knowledge if anyone else is able to post comments. So I'd, and then on the YouTube, uh, account, no, as far as I know, no one is able to post comments on the city's YouTube account for our meetings. And the beauty about social media is that you're able to connect with other people, you're able to connect with the residents, and, uh, you know, share your thoughts on what's going on in your, in your town. Well, our city manager has done a marvelous job of disconnecting the residents from each other and from disconnecting the residents from the city council members. Why? You know, the only reason why I'm here is because we don't have a call-in feature. And if, and if we did, wait a second, hold on a second. What happened to the call-in feature? For some reason, it just mysteriously went invisible. I just can't help but wonder why that is. I mean, we're tracking it for a while, and then it just went, poof, vanished. Well, I guess it's an unanswered mystery. But, uh, yes, uh, you know, the, the, the same manager, you know, his job isn't to run me, you know? You know, his job is to run the folks that work inside this building. And he has it twisted. He has to think, you know, he has you all thinking that it's his job to run the residents. No, it's anything, it's our job to tell the city manager how to do his fucking job. And, uh, uh, one last point on my emails. Look, it's just commentary. You know, I, I have no, uh, I can't tell the chief of police to read my emails. You know, he's a grown man. He's, well, he's gonna need direction from me. And there's a very simple solution to all this. Just hit delete. That's it. You know, I'm not gonna know. Google doesn't tell me. Microsoft Windows ten doesn't tell me, you lame-ass fucks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Gabi Gutierrez, and I'm a resident of Echo Park, Los Angeles. I work in Long Beach with many people from Southgate, so I've become very aware of the traffic environmental issues in the area and the mounting concerns of the southeast L.A. residents. When I found out how much work the residents here have done to communicate their problems with the illegal truck yards to the council through emails, meetings, phone calls, and even hundreds of signatures, I was shocked that the council has made zero progress on this matter. So why is the council completely ignoring the constituents? Who does the council serve? Living in Echo Park, I get to witness the benefits and the attention paid to residents in northeast L.A. River communities, safe bike lanes, paths, assistance for growing small businesses, community arts events, and the cleaning up of neighborhoods. There is a lack of concern and resident, and resources for the communities of southeast L.A. that is visibly apparent. The residential neighborhoods are taken over and polluted by trucks operating out of illegal yards. Bike safety on the roads is nonexistent, and the community arts is floundering. We have high hopes about the Sela Community Center, Cultural Center, but there has been no news on that since last December. I'm incredibly concerned that the future of Sela is grim if you don't take ant action and prioritize the well-being of your residents over corporate interests. Please start by enforcing your own laws and shutting down the illegal truck yards at eight-four-four-zero Alameda and four-five-five-two Ardean Street. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eddie Rivas. I am a speech-language pathologist, and my wife, Sarah Rivas, who could make it today because she's with the kids, her name is Sarah Rivas. She's also a speech therapist. We've been living here, she's been living here her whole life, and I've been here for more than thirty years, so I love this city. We've been, uh, we started our own business in speech therapy, and, um, we wanted to open in thirty-five twenty-six Tweedy Boulevard, which is in the, where the dominoes is at, the mixed use. We've come across some red tape, and I think it would be a great asset to the community to open up a speech-language clinic there. We would be serving for now a zero-to-three population, like little kids from like one-year-old to three-year-old. Once we get that, if we get that clinic, we can go ahead and get a, hopefully get a contractor, be ventured with Easter seals, and then we can serve kids that have autism here in the community that are ages four to ten. So I just want to introduce myself. I'm no, I'm not kind of congruent with what other people are, are talking about. But, uh, yeah, that was it. Thanks.
Good evening, Council. My name is Amy Liu. I'm from the Leland R. Weaver Library on Tweedy Boulevard. I'm here representing both libraries this evening, and I just want to announce a few events that the library is offering for the community. The first one is the beloved Cover-to-Cover Book Club, sponsored by In-N-Out. Every year, we offer this at both libraries. Children five to twelve are welcome to come in to sign up. All they need to do is read five books, and they get a voucher for a cheeseburger or a hamburger at In-N-Out. Very exciting. Parents love it, kids love it. We hope everyone can participate. That's going on until November sixteenth, now until November sixteenth. Later this week, on Saturday at two P.M., we are offering a Henna art demonstration for our teens to learn about Indian culture and heritage. They will also be able to get a small Henna art piece on, on themselves. And finally, next week, to celebrate the spooky season, we have a book adventure. The book in question is Creepy Crayon for ages five to twelve with their parents. They will be reading the book, learning about what's creepy, and making their own art, um, art-created tote bag. So I have this for council as a reminder. I hope everyone in the community and council can join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sil Gonzalez, and I'm the chairman this year for the thirty-first Thanksgiving dinner by the Rotary Club of Southgate. Thirty-one years, we've had the support of the city council, the Department of Parks and Recs, and it started in a basement in an apartment house on Otis Avenue. So thirty-one years ago, the city council, the staff, everybody contributed. Today, those seniors, those shut-ins, the people that never had a Thanksgiving have had it for thirty-one years. So it's very important to me, but it's very important to know how it started and what's happened. The kids from the high school, we can only take a hundred kids to feed six hundred people. So on Thursday, on Tuesday before Thanksgiving, November twenty-eighth, we have an orientation. And we can only take a hundred kids to serve six hundred people. We had a great mariachi festival. I'm looking at him right here. He, in two thousand eighteen, Arturo Cervantes brought a huge mariachi to the people. But the most important thing is that we have people in Southgate that never had a Thanksgiving. We have kids that never known what Thanksgiving is. So I want to invite all of you, November twenty-eighth. On that day, at eleven-thirty, we will be serving the community. I sit here and I hear everything that's wrong. Well, I want to tell you what's right. It's that you guys care. The staff performs. Steve, I can remember, he was a young man. I had to fight with him because we needed more tables. So for the first time in thirty-one years, I just come, because this, I'm the chair. So I want to tell you, thank you. I waited my turn, but I'm so proud of Southgate, so proud of what we've done for our seniors, our shut-ins, and the people that don't have Thanksgiving. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sil.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es María Moreno, residente...
Evening. Uh, my name is María Moreno, resident of Southgate.
Por cuarenta y cinco años.
For forty-five years?
Ah, vengo a pedirles un favorcito si pueden...
I am here asking you for a little favor, please.
Un crucero de peatones en la Orchard y South, y la Long Beach.
We would like, uh, pedestrian crossing.
Ay, es mi hijo. Perdón señora, si me da pausa, por favor, diga las calles una vez más, por favor. Orchard is, uh, Long Beach.
An Orchard and Long Beach.
Frente a la escuela, mi corazón, lindo corazón.
In front of the school, uh, mi corazón.
Ahí falleció mi hijo, después de que él falleció.
My son died there.
Vi dos muchachos, primero uno...
And after that, two more young men.
Ah, después a la semana otro.
A week later, another one.
Son los que yo he visto.
Those are the ones I have witnessed.
Y quiero pedirles, por favor, si pueden poner un crucero de peatones...
I am here to ask you, would you please put a pedestrian crossing there?
Y pues también si pudieran poner topes porque pasan muy rápido.
Also, traffic bumps. Cars go by there way too fast on Orchard.
No me gustaría que otra persona falleciera.
I am trying to avoid another person from dying there.
Si pudieran hacerme el favor, por favor.
Would you please do that for me?
Muchísimas gracias, que tengan buena noche.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Okay, see no one else. Step forward and close the audience portion. Do we have any more emails?
We have no emails, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead, go around the room, and anything that was brought up can be addressed. I would appreciate it. Okay, Arturo, you're up first.
Yes. Meanwhile, the CIP presentation is put up there. I would address, I will address the request for a pedestrian crosswalk at Long Beach and, um, and Orchard. Just want to let you know that the, there's, it's very complex to make the decision to just install it because residents are using that location. Right now, what we've learned from the traffic study that the school prepared is that's, that wasn't a designated crossing for students, and their study says that students should cross at the nearby traffic signal. On our end, the master plan for that intersection is to have a median, and so that's another reason. Further, that intersection is really close to an inner side, to a signalized intersection as when cars are dashing through on a green light, expecting them to stop at a crosswalk because of pedestrian creates yet another hazard. Nevertheless, we're taking that to risk, and we're taking a look at that to see what it is that we could do. And if we have the CIP presentation...
Can you address the speed bump issue? Because I know I hear that a lot.
Yeah, the speed bumps, I wasn't quite certain what street you requested a speed bump. But if she was, just, just in general, on major streets like Long Beach Boulevard, it's not lawful to put those speed bumps because of the speeds of vehicles. Those are better designed or designed for slow-speed streets like residential streets. If residents want to have resident, uh, speed bumps installed, we do have a policy. It starts with a petition and then a traffic study by the engineering division. And so if they'd like to start the process, they can contact us at the engineering division for that. But there is a policy in place that provides for those. Which is regarding the CIP update just here quickly, this is a schematic of the interchange modification at Firestone Boulevard and the southbound on-ramp. As you've seen, we've done part of the construction, which is widening the bridge. And so we're really close to getting final approval from Caltrans to start construction on the realignment of the ramp to line up with that widened bridge. So we think we're thirty to sixty days away, and if we're successful, we can advertise, advertise for construction bidding in January of twenty-twenty-five. Next slide. Here, I just wanted to mention again, we've got three projects under construction. The Circle Park renovation and the Holliday Park renovation are proceeding on schedule. You see the dates are that we plan to complete those. I do want to mention on the Urban Orchard project, we've now opened bids. We're in the process of reviewing those bids, and we're planning to start construction in November. Next slide. Here, just a quick update on the Tweedy Mall Complete Streets project, just simply to indicate that project is also proceeding on schedule, and we're currently working on the near Otis, uh, on the, both the south and the north side, and contractor is gonna start heading west again over, uh, this weekend, over the next few weeks, as the immediate area that they're focusing, uh, work on. Next slide. And finally, I want to mention that the city has been working on investing in its water meters to improve upon those. We've have several phases that we are working on. The area in green represents all the areas of the city where we've already converted the water meters to those that are upgraded with better technology. We've have another phase under construction highlighted there in yellow where we're in the process of converting those to the AFMAR, well, again, with the, uh, more efficient technology and read, and reading those and where it's automatic reading. And then we're getting ready to bid a fourth, uh, phase of that project where you see cycle three in purple there, as yet one of the city's many efforts to invest in the water system and in the water meters, as that was something that was directed by the council through, in response to community concerns. So just wanted to mention that that's underway. Thank you.
Stephen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. As our librarian said, it's spooky season coming up here, and we will be partnering with the Paramount Unified School District for Holliday Elementary School, holding a trunk-or-treat in that area. Parks and Rec is providing different items for that, and that, uh, is gonna go on this Thursday, uh, over in the Holliday Elementary School. Also, we have Halloween coming up. This is one of our biggest events in the city, uh, for the whole year. We get anywhere from six to ten thousand kids out there. We've done a lot of revamping for this year. That with all the other new things we've got out there, it's gonna be a real great day. I hear that we're gonna have a lot of council people as judges.
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
How did you know? I'll be there.
All right. Always looking for good judges. And then, uh, last thing is November second, the fall games for Special Olympics will be taking place at Southgate Park. So you're all invited to be there for that, too. Thank you.
Meredith?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Daly's comment regarding the illegal truck yards. We, I have sent our code enforcement officers out there. It is true that fifty-two eleven has been shut down, and they've been shut down since last year. In regards to Ardean, we found out that they may have, uh, an actual business license for such use, so we're still doing investigations on that site. In regards to the Imperial site, um, they actually do have three containers out in front to deter trespassers from getting into the property. But I've also asked, uh, our code enforcement officer, because they do have existing citations to keep, um, at it and informing the, the property owner, uh, to keep, uh, to move forward with their development. They're currently on hold, and it's actually, the ball is on their court, and so we're trying to, uh, speak with them to expedite that process. And then in regards to eight-four-four-zero Alameda, that's with the city attorney's office.
Okay. Wendy?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Just a reminder that, uh, Administrative Services Department is excitingly working on the end-of-the-year financial statements, which, once we round those numbers out, um, we will bring them to council and then also publish them on the city's website.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, Council. Anybody interested in a job, go to cityofsouthgate.org, hit the jobs tab. And right now, we only have a few jobs up and, and we're promoting, and that's in Public Works, Journey Electrician, and Public Works Senior Management Analyst in the Engineering Department. And Parks and Rec, we're looking for lifeguards, and then a rec leader two for grounds. And finally, Police Department is looking for a police dispatcher. That one closes October twenty-seventh. So we're looking for some good applicants for all these positions, but that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Captain?
It's good evening, members of the council, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that this Thursday is our trunk-or-treat event here on Seaboard. It's gonna be from five P.M. to eleven. I'm sorry, from five P.M. to eight P.M.
Whoa.
Strike that.
Eleven.
No, we'll run out of candy before that, for sure. And then also regarding the complaint on, uh, Long Beach and Orchard, I'll be meeting with our traffic team tomorrow so that they could go ahead and address speed violations in that area, and also vehicles failing to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk.
Thank you. City Manager?
I just wanted to share a simple story of this. Earlier today, we saw at our five-thirty meeting certificates for, uh, our Youth and Government Day. That was brought back from, um, a few years of not happening. I have seen these other cities. I'm always encouraged when I see high schoolers in short order come in for a half-day, learn about the city, um, and understand all the complexity in pretty short order, come out and actually star as council members, members of the public. They all go through an exercise to, to figure out some of the similar hard decisions that you have to make and we have to support, uh, to watch them succeed so quickly and to really, you know... um, you know, star in those roles, uh, makes me feel like the future's in good hands in the future. And so I just wanted to show that was a great experience, uh, to see and, uh, we're planning to bring that back each year so that we can make sure the youth, uh, have a chance to partner with us and become the next set of leaders.
Thank you. Rahul.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. There was a question raised by one of the speakers about the power of the city attorney to block residents from talking with city staff. With the city manager. Uh, and, uh, the answer is yes, the city manager under law, uh, has a tremendous amount of latitude to protect the workplace environment of the city's employees. Uh, the, the big difference between coming to the city council meeting and expressing your viewpoints, using whatever language you'd like at a, at the dais is because city council meetings are considered public forums. And, uh, an individual can come in and express their viewpoint so long as the viewpoint has something to do with city business. There's a much different standard, however, when it relates to the operations of the city outside of a city council meeting. State law in recent years has, uh, made, uh, stricter, uh, laws to prevent harassment and bullying in the workplace environment. And employer has a duty to watch over, uh, and protect its employees under those circumstances. And so, uh, I, I wanted to make sure that the public, uh, and the speaker understood the significant difference between, uh, speaking your mind at the council dais and how you, uh, interact with city staff, with the city manager outside of the city council meetings. Much different standard, uh, and in many respects, city manager has no other alternative but to take steps that are prudent to protect, uh, the workplace environment against bullying and harassment. So I want to make sure that the council understood that and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. City Treasurer.
My items were, uh, covered in the previous conversations, but I just want to thank, you know, all the various social platforms for their feedback and input, uh, that tied into today's conversation. Uh, that's all I had.
And City Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to mention is E minus 14 days to election day. Uh, that'll be Tuesday, November 5th, two weeks from today exactly. I encourage everyone to exercise your right to vote and it's a privilege also, um, to make your voices heard. Uh, in the coming days, um, the, actually there's 12 voting, voting sites in, on the city of South Gate. Uh, those include, uh, vote, uh, drop boxes as well as walk-in, uh, in-person voting. And then the coming days, we'll be posting on social media and our website, the different locations and what they look like. That's it, except for I wanted to wish my, um, son Gavin, he's my middle son, have happy birthday tomorrow. Um, he'll be 18 and I just wanted to say how very proud we are of him and we wish him many blessings. Thank you.
Awesome. Happy birthday. Madam. Councilwoman.
Councilwoman, thank you. Um, first and foremost, thank you to this audience that's still here with us at this late hour. Appreciate your civic engagement. Um, I attended vector control meeting, uh, in the last couple of weeks. They have a campaign to educate the community about the importance of not leaving standing water and to make sure that you are using repellent. Um, unfortunately, they found a couple of cases in Baldwin Park, um, with the dengue. So we need to be vigilant. Um, attended the League of Cities Expo in Long Beach, uh, this past week. Attended several of the sessions, which were actually very good on governance. Um, had the opportunity to walk around and see some of the vendors. Uh, one of the vendors actually caught my attention for community development. Um, it's new technologies using AI where this camera is attached to the vehicles and as our code enforcements are driving, it's catching all of the ordinances or violations so that it makes it that much easier, uh, for code enforcement. The cost, I think, was around 30,000, uh, which is not bad. I think that would be a good investment, but I will give you the information. Um, because there were a lot of good vendors out there and I know one of them had to do with our light issue. So hopefully we can look into that. I also had an opportunity to attend a tour that was being hosted, uh, at the port of Long Beach. And, uh, this one specific organization, which is a nonprofit, uh, she was a former mayor of Culver City, um, who is now the executive director of that nonprofit. They are actually bringing in, um, green energies utilizing the wind of the ocean. Um, unfortunately in Long Beach, we don't get that much wind, but in Morro Bay and up north, um, they actually do. So they're going to do a lot of the construction there because the land is much more accessible. And then from there transporting it out there. So it was really nice to get that education that as a state, we are really moving forward with more of, uh, the green energies to produce a lot more of the energy that we're going to need. Um, had the pleasure of attending the St. Helen's Annual Festival, which was really nice to see the community out enjoying good food, good music and a family oriented environment. Um, and I do want to wish everyone a happy and safe Halloween. To all of our families in South Gate, uh, make sure you are taking good care of your treasures and those are our kids while you are out and about. And I know, uh, daylight savings is coming around the corner, so again, just be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rios.
Thank you, Mayor, and again, welcome. Thank you for all of you for being here. Welcome, Mr. Rivas. You're an orange, you're my neighbor. So I'll be seeing you pretty soon. You know, I, we, I received all these bills. Did all my colleagues get that insurance crisis? Uh, did you get all these emails from some folks regarding an insurance crisis in the state of California? Maybe I just want, you didn't get any? Uh, was I the only one? Okay. All right, I thought all of us received that, so we've got to look into, uh, maybe, I don't, I don't know why they would send it all to me. Okay. Is it life insurance? Maybe they, something about your health that we don't know about. Insurance, I'll buy one in, in the state. There's something going on that there's a crisis.
Having an insurance crisis. And, you know, that was one of the topics that was talked about at, um, the League of Cities. Uh, but I think a lot of it is just fishing, so just be mindful in that. Yes, be careful.
Oh, don't. All right. Well, uh, tomorrow, I want to welcome my, my colleagues. Anybody wants to, uh, here in South Gate at the Hub Cities there tomorrow, uh, Sela Collaborative is, uh, doing a campaign, Paratolos is called. And it's, uh, it's at 6 o'clock. UCLA is sharing their research and, uh, report that they did a, a study on, uh, on, let's see, what is it? On housing and homelessness and workforce development in the Sela region. So anybody interested tomorrow, colleagues, if you want to go there, uh, hear a little bit about what's going on, uh, as they look at the Sela region and those issues that are very pertinent to us. And then the, the other thing is really important, I think. I don't think we're going to meet before the election, right? I think this is the one, the meeting before. So I just want to encourage everybody to vote because it does matter and elections matter. And it's not just the presidential election, you know, it's, it's all these elections. I mean, the, the county has something where they want to expand the, the county supervisor to nine and having a, an elected CEO or executive. So there's a lot of issues related to homeless, to all these, so many issues I, I don't want to, I, you don't want to mention, but it's just so important that we get out there and do our, our civic duty and, and go out there and vote. And I know a lot of people already have voted, right? Because absentees and all of that. So make sure you do that, uh, and, and, and that's it. That's all I have.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, very quick, I also attended the League of California Cities. Uh, I attended, uh, several, um, workshops also, very good workshops this time. I think they were pretty, uh, very educational. Um, also I attended the, uh, Hub Cities. And with Hub Cities, we're having a special, uh, special meeting on Monday and this is going to be regarding, um, LA County. Uh, it's going to, uh, decide whether to give the, uh, um, the contract to another vendor other than Hub Cities. So that is still up there and they, we don't know yet. So, um, Monday we'll have a meeting and we'll see, uh, the outcome of that. And, um, very good news and I think it's for every resident here in the city of South Gate. Finally, we're having groundbreaking for the, um, the Southeast Gateway Line. And this is going to be October 30th at 1:30 in Artesia. So whoever's available to go, please go. This is very exciting. Uh, you know, uh, very good, uh, very good news that finally we are doing groundbreaking after, uh, 20 years of hard work.
Just correction, it's actually two, but I did put it on your calendar, so we might leave early enough to get there for two. So.
I have 1:30.
Yeah, I put down travel time.
All right. So, um, everyone's invited, so, uh, please do go, support. I think this is very exciting. Uh, I'm excited.
So they're starting construction, is that it?
Well, this is groundbreaking. This is the beginning. No, not yet, not yet.
20 years in the making. It's finally.
Uh, yeah, 20 years in the making. Finally is here. Finally, we get to see groundbreaking and, uh, continue of, um, going to Washington to, um, ask for money, which, uh, we're gonna have to continue doing that. And I think that's it.
Okay, awesome. My turn. Uh, and thank you, because I know you've been a big part of it from the beginning and throughout. And sometimes these projects just take forever, as you can tell. I attended this college fair that we had here. Well, I didn't forget, so I'll mention it. A lot of colleges were here, over 20 colleges, I think there were. And it was a great opportunity. It was, uh, they did a lot of real amazing things at the event. One of the young ladies that plays for me at the, at the high school entered a raffle and she walked away. I had to call her back because she won a laptop. And I think they, uh, gave away a couple of laptops and a couple of scholarships also. Uh, so it was very well done. I was very grateful that, uh, that all these, um, colleges and representatives out there. I had the opportunity to talk to one individual, one parent who was there with her son at the Cal State Dominguez, uh, thing. And she was telling him how that sounded like a very good school for him to go to. And I told her that maybe she should consider going with him. And she said, oh, no, I'm a little bit too old for that. I said, I went back when I was 57 and graduated when I was 59. So she said, no way. Yeah, yeah, way. And then the young lady took over from there and told her, yeah, we, we accept anybody who wants to get an education. So, uh, but that was very well done. Uh, so whoever put all that stuff together, I know Joshua had a lot to do with it as well. So I'm very grateful for that. Also to the young man, Eddie, is that your name? Eddie. That sounds like a very important subject. I have a grandson who's on the spectrum. And, uh, if you had seen him at, at the beginning, how much he struggled with, with speech. Now we can't get him to be quiet, uh, which maybe it's in the genes, right, from my family. Uh, so I got plenty of time here. I don't have a three minute time limit, so hang on. Uh, but I think it was great that programs exist for children to benefit. So somehow you and I need to talk before you go away today. In regards, uh, city attorney does a fantastic job, um, not only out here, but also back there and in court. He's done a lot of real amazing things for the city. And I got to tell you, uh, everybody is totally entitled to their own opinion and, uh, I respect that too. So respect my opinion when I tell you that the city attorney does everything that he can to abide by the law. And when we're in closed session, we're discussing some very serious legal matters that we cannot come out here and blurt out what we're discussing because it can have an impact as these proceedings are going on. And if he were to come out here and start telling you, well, this was what we discussed, then we might as well have those discussions out here and open. The reason they're back there is to maintain the integrity of the legal process. You may not like it, I may not like it, but that's the way it works. That's the system that we have. In terms of blocking people, look, I supervised for over 30 years at the USPS and we're there to provide a service to people who use the postal service. But when a customer came in and behaved in a manner that was disrespectful to our employees, I would call the cops on them and tell them, you need to get this person out of here because I had an obligation to protect the people that work for me. And that's the same thing that we do here. We have an obligation to protect our staff. Protect those of you that are here from having to hear some things that cross that line. Freedom of speech is guaranteed by our constitution. And you can come up here and use whatever language you want. There's not anything that we can do about it. You're, you're allowed to say profanity if that's what you choose to do. People are going to judge you for that. So you're entitled to do that and I'm, I can't stop you even if I wanted to. But once the meeting ends and our staff is out there doing their job or looking through their emails, they no longer have to read that. And so not only the city manager, but us as council members, I take a position, don't, don't allow them to read that. You know, that's not important. Uh, maybe some content of it maybe, but you know, they don't have to read that. They have to go home to their families and know that some of the rubbish that they might be hearing is unacceptable. The constitution and freedom of speech does not protect everything though. Libel, slander and anything that incites violence. So if anybody uses any language that crosses that line, it's our job to protect our staff. You make a threatening remark and I will put a stop to it. And that's action that I will take any day of the week, twice on Sunday. You don't do that. You know, we talk about freedom of speech on social media. You know, there've been people who say, hey, I got blocked by the councilman Hurtado. Yeah, I did. And I'm allowed to do that. When you use libel, slander and anything that incites violence. When, you know, we're talking about autism. I blocked a gentleman who used my autistic grandson on a hit piece. When you have that kind of heart in you, if you want to attack me, you know, I guess it's open season, but when you do that with my family member, I will do what I have to do to protect my family from having to see that smut. And that includes blocking people. And so you may not like it, but I don't care. Frankly, I don't care. The law is on my side on this one. So again, when we have people here or on social media making threats, I will take action to make sure you do not do that. You do not engage in that. And we'll put reports in, we'll send it to whoever has to. And if it gets prosecuted, then that's the way it is. You may not like it, but I don't care. I'm going to protect our staff. I'm going to protect our city manager. I'm going to protect every single one that works for him. And I'm going to protect you, the residents of South Gate, from having to deal with that. You're here, you should feel safe coming here, but instead we have to have police officers extra because of that, to protect you. And I hope you appreciate that because I will protect you of whatever means possible. That being said, we got business to take care of.
Can we have a five minute break?
Yes, five minute break.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as you're having a seat up here, I did have a question for you, Rob. And I know a couple of meetings ago, we had talked about possibly doing the call-in feature. But I have to be honest with you, as I've been walking our beautiful streets of South Gate, beautiful streets of South Gate with a lot of humps and bumps. Is there any way that we can possibly bring back Zoom? Because that will definitely open up the ability of our residents who are not able to come here in person, like Ms. Moreno, she just had surgery on her knee. Making it accessible for them, for them to participate in our council meetings. I mean, I appreciate the Zoom, but I think we definitely need to open it up more to the community so that they can actually participate from their home. I know a lot of residents are starting their families and have kids at home, but still want to participate and don't want to leave them with the babysitter. So is there something that we can do, looking forward and seeing what the cost would be, so that we open it up to the community? Because the community has a lot to say, and sometimes they're not always able to make it here.
Well, it's not on the agenda, but I will say the following. I've objected to anything that will impact our meetings from going forward. We've had meetings in the past where the call-in feature goes out, and once it goes out, we cannot resume with the meeting that prohibits those people that we're gonna call in from participating. And so that's an issue. But anyhow, you can have those private discussions on the side if you'd like. But anyhow, I do want to pass out some very sad news for everybody. Fernando Valenzuela passed away today. Those of you who are Dodger fans, Fernando Valenzuela passed away today, age of 63. So anyhow, very sad. Let me see, where are we? Consent, my bad. Consent calendar.
Agenda items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 are consent calendar items.
Okay, let me first open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item, on these items, please step forward.
Okay, mostly number two, this disaster that is Urban Orchard Park. So I got a story, I'm gonna see if I can fit it in. So way back when this project tanked and went into the toilet, I had a conversation with Mr. Costley, and I asked him, and this is like, I don't know, February, March, 2022, and we didn't know what the fuck was gonna happen with this disaster. And it, it would turn out to be this, this, this bigger disaster. And I asked Mr. Costley, because I, you know, Circle Park, you know, there was all this stuff happening with Circle Park, and I asked him, so what do you think is gonna get done first, Circle Park or Hollidale? I mean, Circle Park or Urban Orchard Park? And goddamn it, I got ahead of Mr. Costley. He said, Mario, Circle Park and Hollidale Community Park will be done and completed before Urban Orchard Park. Now, this is back in like February or March of last year, and this is before he even knew of the disaster that was gonna happen with Hollidale Community Park, when, in our development, abandoning that project and that one going in the toilet, and then the, all the delays with Circle Park and Southern California innocent. The fucking guy called it. He got it right. The, he, with all this shit that happened with the other two park projects, it turns out that he's right, that Circle Park and Hollidale Community Park are gonna be done and completed before Urban Orchard Park is done. There's another big project tied into this, and that's Frontage Road East. Frontage Road East is a street repavement project, and that's the one that gives you access to go into Urban Orchard Park. And I asked Louis Osuna, so which is gonna be done first, Frontage Road East or Urban Orchard Park? And Osuma, Osuna estimates about two or three weeks before Urban Orchard Park. So you're gonna have three projects, Circle Park, Hollidale Community Park, and Frontage Road East being done and completed before Urban Orchard Park. If this isn't proof, if this isn't evidence of what a failure this project has turned out to be, I don't know what is. What was I, I lost another point I wanted to hit on. Yeah, so if you want to know what failure looks like, you don't need to look any further than the great puto himself, Arturo Cervantes, our Director of Public Works. Now, he had a shitty year last year. Last year was a shit year for Cervantes. This year, pretty much another flat-line crap year. I think, I suspect, maybe next year will be Cervantes's year, maybe. If you look at the stuff that's on the horizon and the stuff that's in the works, he might be able to redeem his useless ass and have a great year next year. This, this year, no, not a good year for, for Cervantes. And last year, definitely not, not the case. But I want to say bravo to Mr. Costley. He called it way back then. He was right. He nailed a fucking bullseye. He said that Circle Park and Hollidale Community Park would be done before Urban Orchard Park is. And yeah, you were right, sir. That's all.
Any other speaker? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the audience portion. Any emails?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring it back.
I'd like to pull item number six and eight.
You have questions on them?
Yes.
Yeah, you can, that's.
So for item number six and for item number eight, starting with six, letter D. Authorizing the City Manager to approve two contract amendments, each not exceeding one-year term for a total of two years. This is a contract for landscaping. I don't feel comfortable giving the City Manager that level, because at the end of the day, us council members are the ones that are responsible. So I would agree with A, B, and C. However, letter D, I would delete completely, so that it comes before council and council can vote on it after seeing how this particular landscaping company performs. Item number eight would be the same issue for letter E. Authorizing the City Manager to administer, to administratively approve amendments up to the aggravated sum of $100,000 for each agreement, not to exceed $400,000. Again, council should make that decision. It should not be left to a City Manager. That would be the only thing that I would bring up on these two contracts. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is this gonna be the standard practice moving forward? Because it's, it's, that's what it's feeling like.
The question on six is D, and the question on eight is E, I believe.
Yeah, there's no specific direction I've given that I need to expand my authority. I'm, we're following on past practice, to my knowledge, from what staff have recommended. So I haven't given any direction differently. I'm open to whatever council's decision is.
What's the benefit of having you do that? And what's the drawback of?
I think the benefit would be, is just the efficiency of being able to do it administratively and not, you know, having to prep the documents for council, wait for the next agenda, is time, have it on the agenda. We can do that. We could do it on every single thing. We have certain authorities, you know, different levels.
It could delay a project in short.
Pardon me?
It could delay a project.
It could delay something, yeah. I mean, in a healthy organization, which I'm hopeful we're in now, you know, I'd be monitoring the health of landscape, the mediums, I mean, our staff and City Public Works Director, no, I'm on that weekly, on the quality and the need to improve it. So if that continued, and I heard, I do this regularly now, I get all the feedback from council all the time. And so if I'm hearing, you know, a general opinion that you think, say, you know, a certain service is horrible, and it's coming up for, say, a City Manager approval, I'm not gonna just do it. I mean, you, you're my bosses. So it could either be done that way, where I'm always aware of that. If there's a concern, I'm not gonna be sensitive, and I'm gonna just, you know, approve things, regardless of your direction. You could always bring it up, you know, in an evaluation. Or we can have a step where it comes here. I'm really not pushing this one way or the other. I'm open to your direction.
Yeah, I think it was put in place, though, for the efficiency of it many years ago.
I, I think we saw this during Chris Jeffers' time, when we were seeing quite a few of these things that took a lot of staff time to process it. Arturo could probably weigh in on that better.
Yeah, if, if I can mention that, one of the things that we talk about all the time is just the amount of work that is coming through the engineering division because of all of these projects that we have, right? We have over $100 million in funds, and we have some vacant engineering positions we can't fill them. We're trying to do with what we have. We have staff and consultants helping us. So what ends up happening, all this paperwork that we get inundated with impacts our efficiency, so that when Mr. Chris Jeffers came on board, one of the focuses is what can we do to streamline so that project delivery doesn't get impacted, right? Because paperwork is one thing, but the benefit of project delivery is all the benefits that you see out in the street and improving safety much quicker, building parks, or whatever it may be. So the whole idea here is to give us some flexibility to make decisions as projects are moving along, whether it's through engineering or through construction, so that we can continue moving the many projects that we have and the many services that we have forward. The other is development, right? So under the $100,000 authority for each agreement, is we've got a lot of development projects coming through, and every project development wants to be expedited and having to invest in that, where developers are paying those deposits. It's, it's, it just makes more sense to have some level of flexibility at the staff level, so that we can focus on moving the technical material forward and not be bogged down by all of the administrative work. So we thought that it would be appropriate to have some support to streamline by authorizing the City Manager to approve some of these amendments.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, I, I know that I wasn't too happy with the previous contractor, especially with the mediums in our community. They weren't always in. So I'm glad we got a new contractor, and it sounds like, and then I know that there's probably provisions in the new, in the contract. If it's, if it's not working out after a year, you could always, right? I mean, hopefully, that's always a possibility. So I'm, you know, try a new, a new vendor and see what happens, right? So I get that.
This is not a new vendor. This is a vendor that we already have.
We did?
Yeah, that's right. They provided services to the city between 2012 and 2018. And, and just know that we are also monitoring the vendors, and if they're not doing a good job, we would not recommend to the City Manager that we extend those agreements another year. We only make those recommendations where they're doing, providing a really good service to the city.
And, and look, the delay on the Urban Orchard, that is not your fault. We know what caused that delay. And, and it's, you know, disheartening to have, you know, there are times where I call you and I tell you I'm disappointed in something, and I'll express my feelings about that. But, no, I know, but we're talking about all the close, all the, all the items on 3 to 12. And we're not gonna always be, and again, this in a way is, right, because we're wanting projects to move forward expeditiously. We approve the projects, things come up that sometimes have to change, like the Urban Orchard, like Circle Park, Hollidale Park. And to have to come and bring it back to get approvals for things will always be a problem. And I think one of the reasons why we did this, making that opportunity for the City Manager to, he knows what the limits are. He's not gonna spend any more than what we've authorized. So again, I don't have a problem with, with either six or eight.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to mention on Urban Orchard that all the agencies that put hold on us, the county and all of them, well, they were, we had to do our due diligence. We had to comply, and we did that.
We had to comply and we did that. And now we got the green light to move forward. And so sometime early next year, hopefully before summer, hopefully that project will be up and running. And so, but the other thing is that project is totally funded with outside grants and everything. And that's in the millions of dollars. And so that's gonna benefit that area, having their own park there nearby. And there's a lot of residents in that area. They're gonna be very happy. So yeah, we, sometimes these things take time, like you said, Mayor, but you know, yeah. The delays and the Holliday Park, I know I've talked to some people about the issues at the Holliday Park. And I've told them, what can you do? The, the owner of the property passed away. So the company basically shut down. And now we had to go to court to try to resolve that. So anyhow, so we have items three through 12 moved to approve, Mayor. Okay, we have most in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
I will be voting yes on three, four, five, seven, eight, 10, 11, and 12. And I will be voting no on six and eight.
So you meant nine, you're approving nine?
I am, I have an issue with that because the residents elected all of us to be fiscally responsible. And when we give that power over to a city manager, I understand when the certain projects come up, but we will ultimately be held responsible for fiscal sustainability.
Yeah, no, it's just that you said six and nine, six and eight.
Six and eight.
You said eight twice.
Yeah.
No, six and eight.
If you can repeat it one more time?
Yes, on three, four, five, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12, and no on six and eight.
Thank you. Councilmember Rios?
Yes, and all.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes, and I'm going to abstain or recuse myself on 10.
State the reason why.
And the reason why is because I live right on San Luis, close to Tweedy, and it's regarding the light synchronization.
Thank you. Mayor Ortado?
Yes, except I'm gonna recuse myself from item number three due to the proximity of the urban orchard of where I live. And item number nine, that's the South Gate Park Fence Project. And even though I'm retired from that program, I think there has to be a, even though I never got compensated, it's a six-month period, I think. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, you, you know, it's, you're in that area where it's above and beyond what the law requires.
And the law would be six months, I think. After six months, I can do that?
At the, if it applies, yes. And that's a big if.
So I'll recuse myself from number nine as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 13?
Okay, who's got this one?
Are you gonna read it into the record?
The city consider receiving and filing an update of the city council strategic priority projects.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Hopefully, we can have the attachment brought up on the screen. Back in March 28th of this year, the city council and director staff had a strategic planning session. That was a request early on when I started with the city that that would be part of what happened in the first six months. So we set that up, had a good discussion, talked about top priorities for the city. And in addition to that, talked about having some key priority projects that are directly tied to those priorities. And everybody's busy. There's all these parks getting built and different things all over the place. But we also want to keep in mind those top priorities. I wanted to give an update to that. That was part of the, the plan is to give a regular update to the council and the community of how we're progressing on those key points. I'll give that today, highlighting some of them. The attachment has all of them. Just, you can ask any questions on any of them, but I'll try to move quickly here. And then you'll follow up in roughly three months with another update as we go along and determine if we, what time we might want to start setting up a future strategic planning session in the new year. For the first most important goal that was set from the council was for public safety and maintaining the positive connection that the community has with our police department. I can tell you from being in other cities, that connection with South Gate is outstanding. It's, sometimes the police departments don't have that same level of connection. So council wanted to see that continue. And we actually, as an update for that at the next meeting, our chief will be providing a brief summary of all those interactions and special events and items that the council, that the police department does in the community so that it can be advertised and discussed. So that'll be coming at the next meeting, just to highlight that continued work that gets done. Under fiscal sustainability, it's important to make sure that we're doing that. You'll see a number of items like the five-year forecast. We've got an issue in our landscape lighting deficit problem where our landscape lighting assessment district generates not enough funds anymore to cover the costs. So we've had a consultant develop some options to look at the current one and a half million-dollar deficit. So that's just wound up and we'll be working on reviewing that and bringing that forward for more discussion. We also have been pursuing grants to fund State Street as our next median and complete street project. And so a whole bunch of steps, as you can see there, have gone into doing all the hard work to get grants, which generate millions of dollars, which actually fully fund these type of projects. So we're encouraged that State Street will be next in the future for some improvements. On the infrastructure side, we continually need to look at things like, we talked about streetlights and other items, our streets that can be decayed. So Tweedy Mile was already, an update was already given. You can see the different points that were currently in construction, which is great improvement for the city. We have Urban Orchard, we just talked about, going ahead on construction in the next several weeks. It'll be starting up again, which is great. And then we have our development process. That's the front counter we have with our public works, our planning and our building departments. That's a complex process to review homes that are looking for renovations, new buildings that are wanting to be built or renovated, addressing all the many changes and adjustments and review that has to happen there. It involves a lot of hands, a lot of reviews, a lot of back and forth with the people submitting, and it can always need improvement. And so we've taken that on as a goal. We've actually had our first meeting, and tomorrow we have our second meeting with the development review team to analyze how do we track all these items? How do we improve that tracking? How do we make sure we're not losing anything through the cracks? Make sure that communication back and forth with the developer is greatly improved. And so we're looking forward to seeing some major changing. We're even doing some staffing adjustments to highlight the need to keep this improving and getting better. So I'm encouraged by that. And we'll be providing more updates as that comes. Also want to highlight, we've talked about the streetlight conversion alternatives, had some updates today. And that's part of our update in general. And then we're getting a, actually updated city council early. It's in November. It's right now we did. And then we'll be looking at bringing on a consultant for a broader solution. Community outreach and engagement. We've updated our community calendar with our city team. We've done Student Government Day today, and we brought that back. That was one of the priority projects. And we've been doing a lot of work, and we've actually received a lot of positive feedback on building our brand and getting our social media improved with more engaging videos, higher viewership, starting up our LinkedIn brand, which wasn't even going before, and feeling encouraged that we're, our staff's doing a great job there. Organizational excellence, that's internal looking. We've got, of course, the strategic goal process, which we're in, providing an update now. Looking at retention strategies, we've done some research and created a list. We, our ERC, which is our employee benefit, our employee internal team to help morale and teamwork, we've enhanced with adding new events such as Open House at our Public Works Yard and our, bringing back our staff picnic, which was missing for a number of years. We've worked on expanding the budget for that group and making sure the events keep clocking along. And then we have more continued work to look at California for All Grants to help with additional job training. And that gets me to the end. If there's any questions, that's an update. Want to keep you appraised at where we're at, and we've made some good progress. Thank you.
Okay, let me open this up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to address the council, please step up to the mic?
You goddamn soulless motherfuckers. So I don't know how many council meetings ago, I submitted an email to the council members, to the riders, informing them of Downey and their strategic plan. They did a presentation at one of their Downey City Council meetings. And I wanted the riders to see the presentation to find out, to see what Downey does for their strategic plan. You know what Downey does for their strategic plan? They have community engagement meetings. They put together a questionnaire. They put together a survey. They have booths at various Downey city events, and they asked the, they asked the residents about what type of projects and programs they would like for their city to pursue and develop. And they also, you know, have them take part in the questionnaire and the survey. And this is what Downey's doing. What are we doing? You guys aren't including us in the formulation process of our strategic plan. To me, that just shows how wretched you people are. You've, again, have done a terrific job of excluding us, of this so-called democracy that we're supposed to have going here in South Gate. And, you know, you're perfectly content with treating us, the residents, like as if we're ignorant Hispanic hillbillies. Well, this Hispanic hillbilly here wants in on the decision-making process of what goes into our strategic plan. This Hispanic hillbilly here wants to have a say as to what the strategic plan is going to be. And in the item report for the, for this item, for the strategic plan, it stated that there was a special meeting at the Azalea Room where only the big department heads were to give input on the formulation of the strategic plan. Well, where are the, where were the residents? Why weren't we included? Why didn't you think of asking what the residents would like to see? I would like to have a say in that, in, in those meetings. And also, you know, the, the city has these big street projects, these repavement, resurfacing projects. Why can't South Gate put together the list, or like the top, I don't know, maybe six or eight, whatever streets that need special attention, and let the residents vote and pick which street should be next on, that gets resurfaced and repaved? I mean, let us have a say on these big street projects. And again, this just shows how the level of regard, the disregard that you guys have for us, the residents, to not include us in our own strategic plan. And for that reason, I say, you lame-ass fucks.
Thank you. Any other speaker? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the audience portion. Any emails?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, let me bring it back.
I'd like to receive and file, make the motion.
We have a motion in a second. And by the way, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Actually, we probably wanted to do this a little bit earlier. We, we had a meeting a long time ago. Maybe next time we go a little faster than that. No, I, you know what? Not for that. I'm gonna speak longer just because you have the buzzer on me.
That meant stop.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Ortado?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 14 is gonna be interesting. Who's doing that?
Who's doing it? Wendy?
No, Wendy.
Wendy?
City auditor. We should have an alternate justice.
Can you do it? Yeah, good, we could volunteer Wendy. Volunteer.
If I can read it, I'm gonna read it.
Motion carried. Thank you, Wendy.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for October 22nd, 2024. Grand total is $4,162,091.51. Counselations are 1-0-7-0-1-0-1-0-7-2-8-1. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I just open it up to the audience if the, anyone in the audience has any questions.
Okay, Ms. Kelly, I know this is something that you don't normally deal with, but I'm just curious, do you, with the warrants, are the payouts and settlements that the city pays in settling these disputes and these legal lawsuits, are they included in the warrants? Because I asked Mr. Salinas this question, and what was his response to me over the phone? Oh, you wouldn't know where to look. Well, what the fuck is that? I mean, what good is it to have the warrants and I can't see the payments and settlements? And again, this just shows how lame and suck-ass our city attorney is, that he can't even include the payments and settlements of our lawsuits in the warrants. I mean, if anything, it should be there for us to see. And if you could just give some clarity, Ms. Kelly, I'd appreciate it. You lame-ass fucks.
Yes, if you were to go online.
Let me close the audience portion first, or you can close that, right, this time?
Closing the audience portion. Are there any ecomments?
We have none. Thank you.
Okay, audience portion is closed. Carry on.
Just to answer Mr. Dominguez's question for item 14 on the city website under agenda, we do have the warrant register, which will list all the warrants that we paid out for this particular council meeting. If there are any settlements that have come to the Administrative Service Department to be paid out, they will be included on that warrant register as well. In the description, we do type in the word settlement, and then it'll also have the parties' names. You're welcome.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrants.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Ortado?
Yes. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Can we adjourn in memorial of Fernando Valenzuela?
Yeah.
Since you did inform.
Yes.
Oh, taking that motion to adjourn.
And yes.
And given the fact that tonight is our last council meeting, I just wish my colleagues the best of luck during this election.
The same.
And hope to see everyone back. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Be safe, everyone. Good night.
Yeah, this one we have to take back.
Yeah, I read it when it was there. I didn't know. He chose me to move it up.